I'd like to welcome everybody to Southbridge Town Council Meeting, Monday, January 27, 2025, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chambers. The agenda, first, Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America, and it's a republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with dignity and justice
Agenda item two, roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Lazo.
President.
Counselor Mondigni.
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Shenier.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Kelly.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
And Counselor Rivas.
Present.
We have a quorum. Moving on to three, consider and accept the minutes, meeting minutes of January 13, 2025.
Second.
It's motion to the second. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Anymore of all present? Moving on to subcommittees. Department of Public Works, Counselor Shenyu.
Mr. Chairman, no report, but we have a meeting this coming Wednesday.
Education Human Services, Counselor Mondigni.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No report and no meeting scheduled at this time.
General Government, Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting on January 22nd, last Thursday, and Agenda Items Number 11, 19, 20, and 21 were discussed.
Thank you. Moving on to Planning Your Development, Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We had a meeting on Tuesday, January 21st, in the Grand Army of the Republic Room. Items 22 to through 28 this evening were discussed, and we'll discuss them further tonight. Thank you.
Moving on to protection of persons of property, Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. We have a meeting on January 22nd. We have a few items we need to discuss, and nothing to schedule at that time for future meetings.
Thank you, Counselor Dow. Moving on to five, Chairman's announcements. I would just like to do a quick overview. We attended the Mass Municipal Association. I think it was very informative. It's a good time to mesh with a lot of other selectmen, councilors, town managers. The governor spoke, the lieutenant governor, the state senators. It was very interesting and informative, and I'm looking forward to going again next year, next year. I know the councilors, for the ones that attended, I saw a lot of them at the functions, and it was a good time, but very, very informative. It's here for Chairman's announcements. Moving on to Town Manager's announcements. Town Manager.
Thank you. Just have a couple announcements this evening. First off, reminded that next Monday, February 3rd, at 6:00 PM, we will be conducting the interviews for, to fill two vacancies on the school committee. As of today, I have three applications and resumess in the office, those that will kick off exactly at 6:00 PM for the interview and the appointment of two members for that committee. The reminder also that next Monday as well, at 6:30 PM, we will be holding a public hearing relative to a nuisance dangerous dog. And then the regular meeting will be held at 7:00 PM. A follow-up to Counselor Chairman Lazo's comment about the Mass Municipal Association meeting, it was great to have a majority of the councilors there. It was very informative. There was a lot of great programs. One of the things that we'll take and look at, the governor has issued their first pass at the budget, House One. Well, we're going to take a hard look at that as we move forward in this budget season. Just for the council's knowledge, we're going to have some budget pressures on us, namely, we were informed, as was everybody at the conference, for health insurance, it is anticipated anywhere from a 9.9% to a 19.9% increase in health insurance costs to the town. So we will know further within the next two weeks where we fall within that. The average will be 14.7 across all lines for health insurance. So while the governor has proposed some increases in local unrestricted aid, the majority of that will be taken up because of the tremendous increase in health. We're, it was great to hear that the governor is also putting in some additional money for Chapter 90, for the roads. We'll see how that ferrets out as the budget goes forward. So those that are in the audience, please contact your representatives and your senators to make sure they advocate for the town. We did see also what was concerning in our chapter, well, within the budget charter reimbursement, there was an increased charge off to the town of $1.1 million in charter school. So we have to take a hard look at where that additional 1.1 over last year came from in the charter school assessments. So we'll be working hard with budgets. We're going to be very cautious as we move forward so that we have a balanced budget. We will develop a balanced budget. All the departments have placed their budgets to us. We'll be evaluating that, making the best determination, and continue the great services that we have. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Town Manager. Moving on to presentations, we have no presentations tonight. Moving on to Citizens Forum, Agenda Item Number Eight. Any citizens that would like to address the council on any issues that are not on the agenda tonight may approach the podium.
Hi, I'm Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill. And I sent you all an email over the weekend and about our homelessness problem. I know we have lots of problems, that's why there's such a packed house here. But what are we going to do about that? The Methodist Church is closing at the end of this week. I don't know how we're going to have this. Does the Board of Health have an alternative when they condemn a house? And I don't know if they kick somebody out if they automatically, automatically if they condemn it. I really don't know. Can we have a moratorium on condemnation of houses in winter? That's not cool, I don't think. So I would really like if the Board of Health would give an alternative to where people can live, and I don't know what we're going to do as a town. We really have a homelessness problem. And I know like last year, that I think the community center opened up during the day, but what about people in the evening and night? I mean, it's great that they can go in, get a meal, have a bathroom, whatever, but we need to take care of our people. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council on any issues that are not on the agenda tonight?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council.
State your name and address, please.
My name is John Pulaski. My, I'm registered at 87 Old North Woodstock Road here in Southbridge, place my grandparents bought in 1915. And I'm going to talk, I'm inspired by the predecessor speaker who, what she's saying is all the more important because yesterday we lost a church community that was founded in this town in 1832. That's sad to me. What seems to hurt them, in my opinion, I was brought up Roman Catholic, but I've been attending that church because they follow the command to, it's called the Great Commission, and you don't need me to preach, but essentially it's, this is why I'm blaming Ms. Doyle for my going down this road. These people that live in the woods, some of them veterans, now this state has one of the best veteran programs in the United States of America, there's no doubt about it, but you still have to meet a certain standard to collect. So we have homeless people, some that are just going through, that serve our country, that can't get their day together because of their bad memories of their service. I was fortunate, I served four years on a nuclear sub, I have almost entirely good memories. I can't imagine having hot lead buzzing by your ears when you're sitting in a rotten hole somewhere in another country that you never wanted to visit, and then having to live in the woods. A dog, by law, I'm just saying by law, I'll debate anybody on this, in any, almost anywhere in the United States, a dog who's been left in a car in the summer has more protection for their safety. And it's not just our veterans, right? I don't care if you're a drug addict and you used to steal, we don't let it in our prisons, we shouldn't let it on our streets, and it's not our fault, I'm not blaming any of you. In fact, our town does better than most to resolve this issue. It really does. If someone's putting our town down, you can tell them, besides having one of the best art centers in the state, we take care of people more than most. Unfortunately, the church that did it the most closed yesterday. My five minutes is probably up. I'll talk about what I was going to talk about in another five minutes. We got a whole long, lonely, cold winter to talk about things, but I hope there's changes in the spring. Next year is the 250th anniversary of the United States of America, and I think it's going to be something to celebrate about. I think the days ahead are going to be better, but we can't do it sitting on our chairs waiting for somebody else to do it. This town is famous, in my grandfather's day, for being a can-do town. When we had a depression, AO just cut the hours of people, kept people working. We got rough times ahead for some people. I think if there's any buildings in this town that the town owns, that are in disrepair, about to fall apart, that can't be sold, I almost guarantee, I'm not volunteering for anyone, but you have amongst you on that board, people in the construction business that have been extraordinarily generous. For example, I'm thinking of the memorial at AO. I bet you we could build, I would recommend a male and a female dormitory, two big old buildings somewhere where we can keep up 24 people. I bet oil companies with Garen would pay for the oil. I bet carpenters would, carpenter and painters would paint. Let's show, let's take a leadership position in the Commonwealth that we can help people, even though we may be among the poorest in the state, we can look out for our own. So anyway, you guys, thank you for your service to the town. I know you work hard. I haven't been going to meetings as much. I know you guys do, I know it's a drain on your families and your, your important people in your life. I wish more people would volunteer to take the load off. Because I remember a town, we had town meetings, everyone seemed to chip in, there seemed to be more harmony. But then again, it was a Democrat, Rob, John F. Kennedy, that was president back then, and it was a different spirit out there. But we can bring that spirit back. We don't need to look at just one person. We can be proud of each other collectively and what we do. There's a, there's a church on that hill that sits empty. I think, I like it, I think it's, it's one of the prettiest churches in town, that copper roof, the way it accents the church across the street, it's a postcard in itself. And I hope there's a group of people, they don't have to be Christians, but I hope that church, I heard a rumor that some people, Society of Friends, like the Quakers, are thinking of maybe renting that place. But let's continue to take care of our, not, I don't want to give away seven meals a day, three meals, three meals a week, so they still have incentive to go out and work, and a place to sleep in the cold winter. Kick them out in the spring if you want, but a warm place in the winter. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council on any issues that are not on the agenda tonight?
Good evening, Town Council. My name is Stephanie Rivers. I reside at 92 Harrington Street in Southbridge. And I know that Agenda Item Number 12 is in regards to voting no confidence on...
Stephanie, if, can you keep the discussion, we're going to talk about it under the agenda item?
On Agenda Item 12?
Right, when it comes up, you can come right up.
Okay.
Instead of, they can citizens forum and either, or we like, we usually do the agenda item to the agenda item.
I'll wait till 12 then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other residents that would like to talk on behalf, to address the council? If there's nobody, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Nine. I'm sorry. State your name and address.
My name is Parker Weaver. I reside in 718 Main Street of Southbridge. I just moved here about a month ago. I was born outside of the United States but adopted by American family. I have a question about the poverty of the homelessness here in Southbridge. I was lucky enough that I did not end up homeless. I am a drug, I'm a drug addict and an alcoholic, but luckily I was able to find a place that was able to take care of me, and I pay rent there. But I wonder about the other people who are looking for redemption, who are looking to change their lives, and some of these people don't get chances. And so my question here tonight is, where will the funding go to get these buildings to help these people? I know, I'm a big believer in second chances. I was given more than actually a second chance, but I stand here today because I care about the people that are homeless, that are addicts. I understand that there is a center on Everett Street, I believe. I've been there a few times, but I know that they only have programs during the day, and forgot who it was that said it before me, but they have, they have a meal during the day, and they have like, you know, a bathroom. But where do these people go when it's wintertime and it's night? Where do these people stay? They're out in the woods. You know, I walk from my job that I recently got, and I see some people out in the street, and it's sad. And, you know, something that I think that not only Southbridge should be doing, sorry, I shake a lot, I'm so nervous, but I don't think it's like something that only Southbridge should be working on, but more of a community around Southbridge, like Stirbridge and all the surrounding towns, and even the state of Massachusetts, we are the best for healthcare, like EA, EDC benefits, like just cash assistance and just benefits for, to help people that are in desperate times. But one thing that I have noticed is that even with us being the best healthcare system, we still lack some, how do I put it? We still lack some, we still have flaws, basically, and I would like to know how you guys would be able to fix that. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens who would like to address the council on any issues that are not on the agenda tonight? If not, we'll move on to Agenda Item Nine. Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Abby Lutner of Pottsboro, Texas, as a full-time firefighter for the town of Southbridge, based upon the Fire Chief's recommendation, with a start date of April 1st, 2025, contingent upon the successful completion of all medical and physical testing, including passing state physical assessment test, BAT, background checks, and state ethics training. So moved. We have a motion to the second, discussion. Town Manager.
That was at the PPP, was three and one abstain.
Favorable at Subcommittee?
Thank you. Very pleased to bring forward my appointment of Abby Lutner as a full-time firefighter slash and paramedic for the town of Southbridge. It was very great to talk to Abby via Zoom and also in person. I know that she's going to be a great addition to the Southbridge Fire Department, given the level of experience and the type of department that she's coming from, and I look forward to a long career here in Southbridge. And I'll turn it over to the chief.
Chief.
Just giving her the play-by-play on how this all works, so thank you, everybody. Good evening, all. Lot of citizens here today, and this is really a good time. Thank you, council, for allowing me this opportunity to introduce Abby Lutner, who I am recommending for the appointment of the open firefighter position within the Southbridge Fire Department. Abby currently resides in Pottsboro, Texas, where she's been serving as a full-time firefighter and paramedic with the Denison Fire Rescue since 2022. Prior to that, she worked in the same capacity with the Howe Fire Rescue, starting in early 2018. Abby holds an Associate's of Arts degree from North Central Texas College, and has built a solid foundation of both education and field experience in fire and EMS. During the interview process, Abby expressed a strong desire to expand her career and experience life in a different part of the country, New England, Massachusetts, Southbridge. Her goal of the transition to New England and immerse herself in a new way of life, and she has chosen Southbridge to take place for her journey. Abby's start date will be, will be with the department will be approximately April of 2025, which will be the contingent of her employment tonight, as you see in your appointment record. Once Abby completes the pre-employment process, she will join the department to familiarize herself with our operations. She will not need to attend the Fire Academy, as she has already has her completed basic firefighter 1-2 certifications in Texas, which are equivalent to the training standards in Massachusetts. Additionally, she has received credentialing approval already from the Office of Emergency Medical Services here in Massachusetts to operate as a paramedic. I am confident that Abby's experience, skills, and enthusiasm will make her a valuable addition to our team and community. Therefore, I'm highly recommending Abby Lutner. Thank you.
Any discussion? Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. The reason why it was three, one at the PPP meeting, I vote abstain at that time, I wasn't sure about her residence, and it was a promise she will move on or before her job starts, so I'm going to support that tonight, just to let everybody know why it was one abstain. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dow. Any further discussion by any other councils? Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I mean no disrespect to the candidate here tonight. I'm just asking, of all the people that live in Southbridge, Central Mass, the whole state, in this area, you found no one else that was, that could compare to the, to this candidate's background? No one in Massachusetts whatsoever, so we went all the way to Texas for someone?
I'll take that.
Vizel Manager.
Thank you. We actively recruit firefighter paramedics, firefighter EMTs throughout not only this area, but the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, any locality. If you are to look at any department around us, everybody is struggling to find qualified paramedics, especially paramedics, to join their ranks. We're very fortunate that individual, while we cast that net, that she has chosen to come to Southbridge, Massachusetts to work. We have a neighboring community that has had a firefighter, paramedic opening for almost a year that they can't fill. Finding paramedics is very difficult in this time and climate, and of the, we were filling three positions, if you recall. The two other positions were strictly EMTs, that, that's all they had was EMTs, because it is very, very competitive right now to find individuals that want to serve as a firefighter or a police officer, or a DPW worker, or teachers. So we will cast that net anywhere we can to find the most qualified person. Abby by far is highly, highly qualified, and that's why we welcome her. We don't, if there was somebody locally that had applied, certainly their name would have been put forward, that's a paramedic. This was one of the only paramedics that we had that applied, and we run a paramedic EMS service that's very, very busy, so that's the long short answer of that.
So in other words, you had no one else apply for this job except for the two and Abby?
We, I think we've explained our hiring process quite at length, not only in PPP, but in prior council meetings. There is a hiring process that the Southbridge Town Council and Town Manager adopted many years ago as to what the process was to hire firefighters, EMTs, and paramedics. It goes on the testing of those individuals, the ranking of those individuals, no matter where they reside, if they apply, you take their application. That process was followed to the T, a process, again, that was confirmed by this Town Council or a prior Town Council, but the Southbridge Town Council, that ranks candidates by their testing, by their interview skills, within their peers, so the peers rank them, and then that assessment is completed and then brought forward to the Town Manager's office, where further interview process is taking place. As I stated previously, Michelle participated, Michelle Hill, our Finance Director, conducted those interviews, ranked the candidates, found this candidate to be highly, highly qualified, and I stand by my recommendation, my appointment of this candidate.
My only question was, were there other people that applied? That's all.
Nobody as highly qualified as this person right now.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. Like I said earlier, I have a question before about moving in clusters, and she promised, I will support her either if she's in, anywhere in the United States. She's an American citizen, she deserves to try and apply anywhere she like. I'm not going to look if there's anybody else, a cluster will be more deserved from her. I guess she worked hard, she served before, she have, like the Town Manager say, high qualification on her duty, and why not giving her a chance? She's a young lady, she came here a few times already, and I don't see why we have to go through this now. We have two meetings down in the PPP, you should attend and ask those questions. I'm going to support her tonight with all my folks. I hope all of you do the same thing. Thank you.
Counselor Shenyu.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I think the most important thing that we, as councilors, should look at, and the town looks at, is that we advertise as an equal opportunity community. So that means anybody can apply. We don't put no restrictions where they come from, whether they're male, females, we're an equal opportunity town. This lady has applied for the job, she went through the process of being interviewed, and the interview committee, the chief, the Town Manager felt it was the most qualified candidate. If you looked at her resume, you would see that she was the most qualified person for the position. We hire these people to bring forward the most qualified people, and I put my trust into the Town Manager and the chief in the interview process that we, as councilors established many years ago. I want to thank you for applying, and I'm going to wish you luck tonight. Thank you.
Counsel, Counsel Kelly, and then Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Personally, I'm very impressed with your resume. Paramedic is a highly skilled and specialized field. We do not, I think we are lucky to have somebody so qualified to, to apply for this position. Certainly, I can tell you that I will support your, your appointment, and good luck, and welcome to Southbridge.
Counselor Marquetti.
I would just like to respond to the comment that I don't attend meetings. I think most of the councilors up here know why I'm not attending meetings. It's not something that I can handle at the same time. If you want to make these meetings virtual, I'd be happy to attend the meetings, but other than that, I think you all know why I'm not coming to meetings, but I don't have any problem supporting the candidate. I just wanted to know if we had anybody else applying. That's all. Thank you.
I think the straight answer on that was, there is nobody else really to go into the position. Actually, the two people that we've put in out of the three positions were less qualified as far as paramedic, so, but she was not ready to come here, and we needed boots on the ground, with a judgment call by the manager, we have EMTs, we're going to put them to work, and then we talked with, with her, and she said, I'll be here April 1st, and I'll take the training during the month of February. Officer Matthew, thank you for the years of service, great job. He's going to be leaving last day, the 25th. So it's almost like the way the chief and the manager worked on it, we're not going to lose any boots on the ground going forward, the quicker we get them on and trained, and we do not have to go to square one with, with this candidate. So I think Abby, on my behalf, I met you and we've talked, and I think you, you're an outstanding candidate. I am supporting you 100%, but I think your qualification... I am supporting you 100%, but I think your qualifications were paramount about the whole thing. We're all Southbridge First guys. We want people to be from Southbridge, but there are people not applying that are from Southbridge. So we need firefighters, and we need them now. Any further discussion, my councilors? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Zachary Martins of Southbridge, Mass. as a constable for the Town of Southbridge, pending a successful background check, completion of state ethics, and proper bonding, and to expire on June 30th, 2026.
Sub move.
Is the motion a second?
Chair, through you, this was 4-0 at the PPP meeting.
Any affirmative to that subcommittee? Town Manager?
Thank you. It's my pleasure to request the confirmation of Zachary. As I stated, PPP, the constable's office become very busy. We currently have four one-of-ones that we had recently appointed. However, due to changes in the circumstance, hasn't been able to be as active as they hoped. Mr. Jesky, who's here this evening, as well as Zachary, had recommended an additional constable, and as such, we're putting that individual forward.
Any questions? Is there no questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present?
Congratulations.
Moving on to 11. Vote to authorize Town Manager in the Airport Commission to proceed with applying for a grant through the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Aeronautical Division, Mass DOTAD, and Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, for, for the design and construction of a new six-unit T hangar at the estimated cost of $1,384,418, with an estimated cost at the Town of Southbridge of $83,844. Town's match for project to be funded through the Airport Revolving Fund, number 80390. Authorize the Town Manager to execute all grants and contracts associated with the hangar project.
Sub move.
Second.
Is the motion a second? Counsel? Counsel Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. This matter was discussed at the, at the General Government Subcommittee Meeting on January 22nd. It was unanimously approved for recommendation of the council.
Unanimous at subcommittee? The Town Manager?
Thank you. As was stated at the General Gov Subcommittee, John Henry from Stantec, who does the engineering and manages our capital improvement plan, and Ron Puff were there. Rick Clements unfortunately is traveling, returning to the area, was unable to make tonight's meeting. This is a request, there's a capital plan that's part of the airport overall master plan. Part of that master plan was to do some additional runway improvements, I believe, outside of the ones that we did where the, however, the FAA has changed the scope of what they're prioritizing. This project came up. We, we get very good grants from the Mass DOT and FAA, and for the amount of money, this will generate additional revenues to the airport as we're able to bring a higher rent cost. These T hangars are in high demand, and we're funding it all through the existing revolving fund, so there's no impact to either the capital project funds or the other funding mechanisms for the town. And I recommend approval.
Commissioner, would you like to say a few words?
The airport is growing. Somebody in this room wants to see it be a regional airport someday. I'd like to see that, too. Actually, we're, right now, we're at 40 airplanes. When I began 10 years ago, there was 10. So we've had a lot of growth. This type of hangar that we'll be building is a hangar that has individual stalls, if you will, in between them. People with more expensive airplanes, larger airplanes. We now have a twin up there. We're looking at a couple of people that want to move to Southbridge that have jet-powered airplanes, and they need a larger stall, if you will, and that's what this, this hangar will give us. There's only six stalls in that's one hangar. I have a waiting list of 19 people that want to move to Southbridge, but they all want to be inside individual hangars. I say 19. Of the 19, there's probably 14 or 15 that are ready to move. Unfortunately, we'll only have six new stalls. All the other hangars are all full. So for the last five years, I've been hoping to build another hangar and try to move more people in. We now have an opportunity with the FAA and with the state to pay for a good chunk of a new hangar. What we're contributing is minimal compared to the total cost of the project, which is 1.3 million. Hangars don't come cheap, and we're fortunately at this time that most of the renovations at the airport are complete, because usually the FAA won't give you any money for any project that will generate money. So we're in a good position right now at the airport, and my recommendation, of course, is we move forward with this project.
Any questions? Counsel Mike Hettie.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say the airport is the pride of the community, and I'm really glad to see this moving forward and, and glad we saved the airport, to tell you the truth. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel Rivas?
Thank you, through you. Just a quick question. Once the amount comes out of the revolving fund, will there be anything, what's the remaining amount in that fund?
I can barely hear you, and I apologize.
I'll answer that question, because I have the funding. The revolving fund hovers usually between 105,000 to 125,000, so approximately 40,000 will be in. But again, once this is built, it's going to generate approximately close to $3,000 per month, so that should generally go up. So we have the fuel prices that we generate income, we have the downed that's up there, and the rentals. So once it's, once it's built, we'll start generating income. We haven't done anything with the revolving funds for any other projects. The last project, we were going to have a match for the fence, but the FAA paid for the whole fence project. So this is a good opportunity that we have a good balance in there that self-sustains, and that they'll keep a balance between 40,000 and 50,000 in there once this is complete.
Thank you, and thank you for your continued attention and management of the airport.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, but the commission, send, send a word from the council. We continuously support the airport and the commission, and thank you for your years of service. I think you've been up there probably as long as I've been alive, but it's all right. Do a great job. All those in favor? Abolting? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number 12. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 12. Review or discuss the request to move on a vote of no confidence of the Southbridge School Receiver, Jeff Valar, and take any action therefor.
Sub move. Second.
Here's a motion by Counsel Montigny for a vote of no confidence, and a second by Ariel Ortiz. Discussion. Are there any citizens that would like to come up? Excuse me, read the letter, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. There's a letter attached to this dated today from the Southbridge Town Council that could be signed if this vote is affirmative. It's addressed to Governor Maury Healy, Massachusetts Desi, Massachusetts Bessie, the Board of Education, other state, local, and federal officials. Subject is the vote of no confidence in Dr. Jeffrey Valar, of course, and it is from the council, based on the recommendation of Counsel Montigny. Dear Governor Healy and respective officials, the Southbridge Town Council formally submits this letter to express its profound concerns regarding the ongoing state receivership of Southbridge Public Schools under the leadership of Dr. Valar. After years of frustration, lack of measurable progress, and increasing discontent among the citizens of Southbridge, we believe a vote of no confidence in Dr. Valar is necessary and justified. Key concerns. Number one, failure to transition. Southbridge is unified in its desire to exit receivership. The Town Council, the Southbridge School Committee, and even the state are aligned in their commitment to this goal. However, Dr. Valar has shown no leadership in supporting a transition plan or working collaboratively to return governance to local control. His presence is the only barrier to moving forward. Number two, lack of accountability. After eight years in receivership, the state provided a plan for Southbridge to exit but failed to include any definitive timeline. Dr. Valar, despite this progress, has not demonstrated any willingness to empower local leadership, instead perpetuating a system of stagnation and mistrust. Number three, poor enrollment data. Enrollment in Southbridge Public Schools continues to decline under Dr. Valar's leadership, a clear indicator of the community's lack of faith in the district's management and its failure to provide a competitive and desirable education. Number four, consistently low MCAS scores. Southbridge remains among the lowest performing districts in the state, with no significant academic improvements under Dr. Valar's tenure. Number five, community alienation. Community involvement remains non-existent. Dr. Valar has done little to engage with residents or rebuild trust. Recent attempts to apologize and extend invitations to ceremonies come across as insincere and are viewed as too little, too late. Number six, disregard for local governance. The Southbridge School Committee has made great strides in its governance, yet Dr. Valar has continuously undermined their authority. His lack of support and collaboration creates a toxic environment that hinders progress and alienates local leaders. Number seven, bloated administrative budgets. Under Dr. Valar, the district has prioritized the creation of high-level administrative positions with salaries exceeding six figures, diverting resources away from direct student aid. This administrative bloat contributes to inefficiency and frustration among educators and taxpayers alike. Number eight, disrespect for citizen voice. Nearly 90% of Southbridge voters supported a non-binding referendum in 2023 to exit receivership. The state dismissed this overwhelming mandate, with the acting commissioner stating they would, quote, "proceed as normal," further alienating the community. Number nine, no accountability for contract or salary. Dr. Valar earns nearly a quarter million dollars annually, yet there is no physical copy of his contract in the Town of Southbridge. When requested, his office directed inquiries to the state confirming that Southbridge taxpayers fund his salary without any accessible documentation or oversight. Dr. Valar's inability to lead, empower local stakeholders, or show measurable progress makes his continued leadership untenable. Southbridge deserves better. A leader who will collaborate with local officials, support the school committee, and prioritize the success of our students and community. We urge state officials to act on this vote of no confidence, terminate Dr. Valar's role as receiver, and support a new unified path forward that reflects the best interests of Southbridge's children and families. Sincerely, the Southbridge Town Council. Now, Mr. Chairman, I do appreciate you allowing this item to be on the agenda. As you know, I was fortunate enough to attend a couple of the meetings alongside you and the Town Manager, with some members of the school committee, and Commissioner Russell Johnson, Dr. Valar, and other school officials. And at those two meetings, one was in September, the other was in December, I could tell you that everybody was on board doing the same thing, and there was a complete lack, that was pointed out at both meetings, a complete lack of being on the same page from Dr. Valar compared to everybody else there. And you can take that, for my opinion, you know, as you want, but I know there's going to be a lot of discussion tonight. Just remember that in 2023, it was either 90 or 100% of this council voted yes to put the question on the ballot in 2023, where Southbridge citizens came out and had an overwhelming, I think it was 87% yes to exit receivership. I don't know if I've ever seen that kind of number on any other question before on the ballot. And, you know, spring of 2024, teachers and citizens came to EHS Subcommittee and literally cried, begging for us to put this vote of no confidence on the agenda at the very next meeting, and we told them that was not time to do that yet, and we needed to give some time to the state's new plan that was signed, that's nearing the end of Phase 1, and Dr. Valar's ability to work with us that whole time. So for me, I've been here a while. I'm not looking at Dr. Valar's performance over the last seven days. I'm looking at it over the last seven years and the last seven months. And finally, you know, for some of us, our discontent with the receiver is one of the biggest, if not the biggest, reason why we ran for Town Council in the first place. Right, Counsel Rivas? Thank you very much.
Counsel Shinya?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The state took, took control of the Southbridge Public Schools in January 2016 due to the chronic underperformance. A review in 2015 highlighted high administrative turnover, low student achievement, and issues with student needs. In February 2018, Dr. Jeffrey Valar became the receiver for the Southbridge School System. Leadership turnover were identified as a major issue by Valar. Despite significant investments, leadership changes, and teachers' turnover continue in Southbridge School. The ideal superintendent should be involved in the community and prioritize improving outcomes for students, not someone that says the following. In the current state of their governance, which rests on the school committee, there is no local capacity to supervise the superintendent. In my professional experience, absolutely none, Valar told the telegram and Gazette. You have to be dedicated to wanting to improve outcomes for kids. That has to be the only motivator. Unfortunately, that may not be the current motivacation. I think the time has come for us to really send a signal to the state that we are not happy, and that I will support a vote of no confidence tonight. Thank you.
Counsel Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Considering how controversial the state receivership is here in Southbridge, I want to take a minute to explain to the citizens of Southbridge my reasons behind how I will vote this evening. I want to assure the citizens, as well as the council and school committee, that I thought long and hard about this vote. In the instance of transparency, I should note that if this vote were taken in December, it would have been an easy yes for me. However, I wanted to take time to do my due diligence and reexamine the issue. First, I believe that there is a lame duck interim commissioner who will at some point be replaced by the governor or secretary of education. I believe the current commissioner, who scored Dr. Valar with fours out of fives in his evaluation, will not respond in any way to the vote of this council in a way that is satisfactory to the council. Secondly, I have a visit scheduled through early February to see the middle high school myself and meet with Dr. Valar. I think it is very important that I see things for myself to make informed judgments. Thirdly, I spoke with all five members of the school committee, as well as citizens and teachers in the district, as I wanted to get a, get a sense of where they stand on this and related issues. These are some of the quotes I wrote down from my conversations. He doesn't love us, and we don't love him, but it's working. Collaboration has to be between the committee, the council, and Dr. Valar. I was hurt by the comments, but progress is there. He is not the easiest to get along with, but the focus should be on getting out of receivership. I asked all five members directly if the council should vote no confidence, and all five people, without hesitation, said that such a vote would hurt rather than help at this time. I have stated publicly on more than one occasion that the boards and commissions in town are made up of fellow citizens, and that their opinions should not be disregarded. While the buck stops with the Town Council, these other boards and commissions are more like experts. like experts in their area and should serve to help us as a council to make decisions. Again, their opinions on subjects should not be disregarded. On a different note, Dr. Villar stated that the committee is not qualified to handle their duties. If the committee feels so strongly about this vote and we vote against the committee's recommendation, it's not the council, in fact, also saying the same thing about the committee, that the committee cannot think and fend for itself at this time. I think they can fend for themselves. Personally, I do not think this is the right time for a no-confidence vote. I would prefer to postpone any action until the school committee and Dr. Villar have had their time to work together. Given time, the school committee will be able to further inform the council and the citizens about whether progress has been made and continues to be made. I have faith in our school committee that was elected by my fellow citizens. Therefore, I will vote against this item before us this evening. Thank you.
Counselor Dell? Thank you, Mr. Chair Threu-Yu. I never spoke before about the school or Dr. Villar. My job here to represent the citizen of Southbridge. We give him the vote, and the vote for us was yes, and that's what I'm going to do today. I'm going to forward the citizen's vote forward. Last year, or a year and a half ago, no response from Dr. Villar. He doesn't want to talk to any of the board members. Some of them was crying here, they have no power or no authority over him. There wasn't either meeting. I understand now, after the town council and the town manager did a lot of work to this point, but I still gonna, I will represent the citizen of Southbridge, and that's why I'm going to vote yes, because that's what the citizen wants. Thank you.
Any other discussion by any of the councils? Counselor Tease?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Threu-Yu. I don't understand why people are so scared of this agenda item tonight. I believe this is a step forward for our community to get our schools under a new receiver who will put Southbridge first. I support this decision to move forward on the vote of no confidence tonight. We can't sit here anymore and allow Villar to continue to do nothing for the schools. I've sat here even before becoming a counselor, patiently waiting to see Villar take action and move our schools forward, but instead I've seen nothing. I'm tired, and I want to see change. Today, we will move forward, and we will be heard. Thank you.
Counselor Rivas?
Thank you, Threu-Yu, Mr. Chair. It was one of the reasons why I chose to run, and obviously, getting our school system out of receivership is a crucial part of the work that we do here and the work that we collaboratively do with the school committee members and supporting the school committee members. And as a former administrator in the Southbridge Public Schools, I know firsthand about the concerns outlined in this letter and the work that is still needs to be done and things that still need to be addressed. I don't see this vote doing anything but undermining the work that our school committee and the teachers' union has done over the past year to move us in a positive direction. For the first time in years, the Southbridge Educational Association and receiver have negotiated and have come to an agreement. The Southbridge Educators Association called this the best deal they've had since being under receivership. That means something. That means something, that our educators have worked so hard to get to this point. The facts don't bear fruit to this motion. It doesn't. I worked in a district attorney's office, and I know about facts. Dr. Villar's comments from August that were quoted in the December Telegram article were insulting to the school committee and undermining the plan we all agreed on in June. So timeline was in June. That is when the leadership from the town council, from the school committee, and from our state delegation sat in a room here in the town hall with our town manager and agreed to the DESI plan for the progress that the school committee is currently in the process of doing. This shows his ability, actually, Dr. Villar apologized to the school committee, and I accept and appreciate that apology. In years past, that wouldn't have happened. That speaks to the work of our leadership on the school committee and all of the work they've done to build that trust. Is it perfect? No, they can tell you themselves. There is, there are a lot of points of contention, disagreement, that is natural, and there are a lot of concerns that parents and students still have that we should never disregard because that is really important. The work that the school committee members, especially the vice chair, the chair, and the new member Brittany Davison, have put in since the DESI plan was implemented, would be disrupted with this vote. It is counterintuitive and frankly, political in nature. What is the outcome the town council seeks with this vote? We know that Dr. Villar's contract is not up this year. We also know that we have an interim commissioner. It is unlikely that this vote would have any positive effect on the work that is happening right now or move us any closer to coming out of receivership. Facts are facts. It is also a direct contradiction to what the school committee wants. None of its members support this vote, none of its members. I believe as a town council, we are called to support our fellow school committee members, teachers, families, and students. Yes, we should continue to ask questions and put pressure on the state to advance the plan as quickly as possible, and yes, I also want a timeline. But we need to allow this process to work. We are seeing progress. There is progress, and we see that, the teachers see that, they posted about it. So those are things that are important for us to consider tonight. We are seeing that happen because of the diligence of the school committee, the work that they are doing with parents and with the Mass School Committee Association. Yes, we should always bring up concerns and ask tough questions. The community counts on us to do that, especially during budget season, when we face tough decisions around crumbling school buildings. We have a duty to question where and how taxpayer money is being spent. However, to engage in personal attacks is a distraction from the work and beneath the town council. A vote against the very plan the chair, the town manager, our state delegation, and school committee leadership agreed on in June isn't giving this plan a chance to get us where we want to be. I see the development of the school committee policy and the ongoing meetings between the acting commissioner, school committee, and town council leadership. This is what moves us out of receivership, not empty votes on the dais. I fully support the members of the school committee and SEA, and for that reason, I will be voting no on this item tonight. Thank you.
Any further discussion by councilors? Save your applause for after, let the councilors and the citizens speak. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Threu-Yu. I've been a vocal opponent of receivership. I ran on that issue as well, and I continue to support the end of receivership. Not two years from now, not three years from now, but immediately, as soon as we can. This is a bad, bad circumstance for the school department, for our students, and for the community. The community can't move forward as long as we're in receivership. For that reason, in principle, I do support this vote. However, I want to be clear. What is in front of the committee today, what's in front of the council today, is a vote of no confidence concerning Dr. Villar, not the process that was adopted back in June. That process, I see no reason why it cannot move forward. And we all support that process. However, Dr. Villar has continued to put up roadblocks. His comments in the December 31st edition of the Telegram were really the last straw for me. And as far as I can tell, all we've been given by the state, frankly, and particularly by Dr. Villar, are platitudes. They're placating us. We have no timeline to get out of receivership. When, what is the drop-dead date? When are they supposed to be out? When are we supposed to take over? None of that's been offered, none of that's been decided, and as long as that remains a question, we will continue to be dealing with this issue. As far as I can see, without a timeline, without a outdate, we can string, they can string this along as much as they can. Now again, I support the process that was adopted back in June. However, we have a problem. We have a problem in that we do not have a receiver that supports that process, and I think it's incumbent upon the elected officials in this town to make that clear to the governor. So I do, in principle, support this vote. Now that said, I don't necessarily believe that we need to make, take the vote today. So I could support a short postponement of it, but in principle, I do support it. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Counselor Mark? Excuse me, let Counselor Mark Kelly go. Counselor Mark Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Threu-Yu. We've all received the emails from the school committee, and they've asked us not to do this tonight, and I think we should work with the school committee. This is what they're asking us to do, and this is what we should do. I'd like to work together with them. I don't really want to work against them. I think that, I also feel that this tonight is a little personal. If it was just a petition to get rid of receivership, I would probably support it, but to make it this personal against the receiver, I won't be supporting that. Thank you.
Counselor Montigny?
Thank you. I just wanted to summarize, there's the council, the school committee, the state, and Dr. Villar, and one part doesn't mesh with the rest in terms of getting out of receivership. You know, the previous speakers have stated that there's been apologies, there's been contract signings, there's been ceremony invites, and all of these things that I just said have happened since we said we were going to put a vote of no confidence on the next town council agenda. That being said, I work for the voters, who I had to look in the face at that EHS meeting when they literally cried. I had to tell them, no, I will not put a vote of no confidence in a recommendation tonight, and apologies make me feel good too, but I work for the children and the families and the citizens of this town when it comes to education and the schools, and I'm going to put Southbridge families first in my vote, yes, vote tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, I'd like to have councilors would like to hear from the public. If you approach the podium one at a time, state your name and address.
My name is Jacob Bond. I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Trouton Street School here in town. I spoke with many of you on the phone today. The SEA is here tonight to ask-
What's your address, sir?
I'm a resident of Dudley, Massachusetts. That's 144 Klondike Road, but I'm an employee of the town.
Make a motion to-
Make a motion and waive the rules?
No, he's an employee of the town, he doesn't need permission. According to the charter, residents and employees of the town are able to speak.
Why, was it under that understanding?
We'll wait in the rules.
Yeah? Okay, that's fine. Go ahead.
Thank you. The SEA is here tonight to ask the town not to take a vote in no confidence of Dr. Villar and instead work with us to end receivership. We feel that there is a strong path forward by focusing on improving the way the schools function, taking steps to retain quality educators and support students, all of which that can be addressed through the turnaround plan if we work together. We are asking you to table the vote indefinitely because we believe that Dr. Villar shares the goals that we do. We have found that if we work with Dr. Villar, even when there was friction, he respected our demands and tried to reach a compromise with us. Our next few speakers would like to briefly speak about what the staff has seen in some of the buildings. We acknowledge that there are still major issues that need to be addressed, but there have been some policy implementations that have worked well. Moreover, we feel that the most effective way to end receivership is by not, not by going after the receiver himself, but to work together to strengthen the systems and structures in our school that would allow us to retain local control. In a few minutes, the SEA will present a solution that we hope the school committee, the town council, and the receiver will be willing to engage in us in implementing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Mackey. I'm a seventh-grade special ed teacher at the middle school. Dr. Villar has connected our district with the University of Connecticut and has supported the implementation of PBIS in our schools, which stands for Positive Behavior, Interventions, and Supports. As a result of his support in multi-tiered practices and interventions, student behaviors have improved over the past eight years. In the middle and high schools, we have significantly fewer suspensions than we did at the beginning of receivership, and we have significantly fewer disruptive behaviors in the classroom. Thank you.
State your name.
Shawna Henry. I'm a West Street School teacher. So I've been teaching at West Street for eight years now, so I started with receivership. I was the fifth teacher in my classroom that one year. In my interview, my sole responsibility as an educator, and I quote, was to keep the students safe, safe, and only in my classroom. That was due to the high amounts of physical violence that was happening and the eloping of students that was constantly happening in our school. There was no curriculum or academic message at that time. Dr. Villar is the third receiver that I've worked with, and I have to be honest that the behaviors have improved tremendously, especially with PBIS that's been implemented at the elementary schools as well. We now use the same ELA and math curriculums at all the elementary schools, which at the beginning of Dr. Villar's term was really beneficial. We were all on different pages. Veteran teachers kind of had more things that they could pull from their hat versus new teachers, so I think it was beneficial at the beginning. But due to the fact that we have high teacher turnover, it's hard to move beyond using a one curriculum that doesn't meet the needs of all of our students. Each year, we tend to start back at step one with so many new hires that have to then learn the programs that we have. This causes much of our professional development time to be repetitive for those returning teachers. The excessive number of observations, the lack of planning time, constant demand sends most of our new teachers to districts that have more autonomy, less pressure from the administration, and dedicate and protected planning time amongst our colleagues. There's, of course, room for growth, and I think Dr. Villar has increasingly shown he's willing to work with us. I worry about starting over yet again with someone else. I think these changes are all able to happen with everyone working together for the same common goal, and that's the success of our Southbridge kiddos.
Thank you very much.
My name's John Polowski. I'm at 87 Old Northwood Stock Road. I care about this matter a lot. While serving for three years on the Bay Path Regional Technical School Committee, it just ended July 1st, we were asked to do evaluations of our superintendent. I did it the first year. Then I heard some people on the school committee one night in the social gathering mention how they're not even allowed to evaluate the current overseer of our schools. I thought that was awful, so I shook things up a little bit. It's the only thing I shook up in the entire three years at Bay Path. I refused to provide a evaluation, which would have been excellent, of our superintendent until our elected town board, school board, we call it, a school committee up here. Pardon me, I got hit in the head about three months ago, words still don't come up for me very well. They're elected. We're following the state's disrespectful path of- We're following the state's disrespectful path of disregarding them. They don't have any, they could be... I'm sorry, I felt bad when one of the people that was running for school committee ran last year. It's like, why are you bothering? It's like running for school committee, or rather, running for school council. They don't listen to you. Run on the council and push. And I was wrong then. This isn't the council's business. It's cool, though, that the council's backing up the voters. This mess started when a council, none of you are guilty, I don't want to blame on anyone by name, but when a Southbridge Town Council had a vote of no confidence in our own school committee. You guys, that council didn't ask for permission to do that. It wasn't even on the agenda. They were backstabbed. And look what we got. State receivership. The state came in within weeks. So let's, if you're going to vote the way you feel, and I believe all of you, you've all said something amazing. Mr. Chenya, I remember, he was with me when we went to the school, only councillor, he was at that meeting with the kids that really cared. It brought tears to my eyes, and I don't have many tears that fall in his eyes. But if you're going to vote in any way, I respectfully ask you to respect the elected school committee and say, you back up what they say. Let's look to our school committee for school issues, our town council for town issues. It works. We want our kids to respect the rules? Why don't we respect the rules? Put the school committee, this sounds, oh, I hope the governor doesn't dislike me for this. Let's put our school committee in charge of our schools. I don't care if the state doesn't care. If you guys take leadership and show that you care, and you respect these people that go to the same meetings that you go to, that send out pizza probably once, twice, three times a month for the kids to eat because you've got to go to the meeting on time, the time you take from your families, they're doing that, too, and the state doesn't even listen. They laugh at them. Well, let's laugh at the state. Take some leadership and let them lead, and then the people in Boston will follow, just like they did when a former council voted no confidence in an elected school committee. Anyway, please support our school committee, and you won't be disappointed. I bet you our overseer, whatever his title is, I'm sorry, I apologize, I bet he won't even want to be here in the fall, and then we can proceed, just like it used to be. Thank you.
State your name.
Maria Mari, 26 Lynn Lane. I have worked in the district for 25 years. I've lived most of my life in this town. I've worked in the school system as a behaviorist, a teacher, an administrator. I've seen it all. I've been here probably the longest. I am coming to you now as one of the co-presidents of the SEA. And one of the reasons we are in receivership, besides the mismanagement of the Southbridge Public Schools by the school committee at that time, is because of instability from having 10 different superintendents in as many years, and I worked under them all. Being an educator anywhere is a challenge, and that challenge is magnified in Southbridge. This vote will only lead to more instability. Every time we get a new superintendent, or in this case, a receiver, our staff can expect a litany of changes, including the loss of building principles that we are currently working with. And we're expected to master all of those changes and implement them as quickly as possible. This has an immediate impact on our staff and our student morale, and the lack of policy continuity is a detriment to education that our staff is able to provide to our students. We are not claiming that the schools are perfect and that everything is rainbows and sunshine. Of course, there are many things the SEA would like to see changed about how the schools are run. However, we strongly believe that there's a better way forward than taking this vote of no confidence in Dr. Villar.
State your name.
Kate Stoica. I'm a chemistry and physics teacher at the high school, and I'm the other co-president of the SEA. As Maria pointed out, we believe stability is paramount to our exit from receivership. We also believe that a vote of no confidence brings the possibility of destabilizing the district further and impeding the progress that we are on track to make. The SEA leadership believes that it would be more productive to focus our efforts on revising the turnaround plan to include the following. One, policies aimed at further reducing the amount of teacher turnover that our town experiences each year. As the stakeholders closest to the procedures and practices that will bring up the positive changes we all want for our students, we are strongly advocating for more educator input into these policies in our schools. Two, clear and concise steps and benchmarks by which DESI will return control of our schools back to the town. And three, the inclusion of voice from all stakeholders by supporting building administrators in the creation of school councils that regularly meet. These school councils, which are required by Mass Gen Laws, Chapter 71, Section 59(c), ensure that stakeholder voice from all stakeholders, that's staff, families, community members, and if age-appropriate students, is included in the decision-making process for school improvement. This would build trust in the community and with families and create a more inclusive school community for Southbridge. In order to do this, we need to work together and insist that the commissioner and the receiver work with us to create this revised turnaround plan. Thank you.
Murch?
My name is Andrew Murch. I reside at 101 High Street, and I will be speaking to you as the chairman of the school committee this evening. I want to make a couple of corrections here. Dr. Villar did, in fact, apologize to us for comments that were reprinted from the September article in December's article. So we did not say those comments in December. It was in September. Made those apologies before the previous town council meeting had occurred. So those comments, that apology was made in sincerity and not before somebody called for a no-confidence vote. Secondly, typically, especially if you look to the charter, the school committee typically has the only authoritative body in the town that has the ability to hire or terminate and evaluate a superintendent. That lies with the school committee, which that power has been reserved to the receiver. I did verify with DESI, Dr. Villar can, in fact, submit a vote of no confidence for himself as a superintendent and send it to DESI, and they can acknowledge that as legal and liable. In Lawrence, there is an organization that is the receiver, so if they voted no confidence in their superintendent, they will be able to follow suit thereafter. That's what the law specifically states. Now, all of the members of the school committee are against this. This was brought up for discussion previously, a few months ago, I believe, and we met, with the vice chair, Member Davison, and I met with the council chair, and we had advised him then, we didn't think that this was going to be the right way forward because it doesn't establish a collaborative effort. I hope, not that any of you, I have this with me pretty much at all times where I go. This is the expected action steps that DESI is, that we agreed to on a May 14th vote and a 6-0 unanimous vote. Member Shaw was absent, but he did express to the chairman Shea at the time that he would have also voted yes to adopt this plan. Phase 1.3, members will set up meetings with local elected officials to build positive working relationships and understanding between the district and the town. As school committee members, we are representatives of the district. Most communication does go through the chair, but we always encourage members to communicate and work effectively with members of the council. We actually, the town council chairman and the town manager, up until the resignation of two school committee members, we had actually had a special school committee meeting scheduled to review the rules of order and the structure of an agenda. Once those two new members are appointed, that special meeting will be rescheduled, and we will still move forward with that. That's part of the collaborative effort between local elected officials and the town. A vote like this, when we have all advised, every member of the school committee has advised the town council that we are not in support of this, and the town council's decision to bring this forward does not establish a collaborative effort. It undermines us. We are busting our butts, working hard, because this plan is the pathway out of receivership for the school committee. It's our job to lead the school district when all is said and done, not the town councils, the school committees. We were all elected to do so under the premise that we would help move the school out of receivership. Our facilitator was appointed in September. From September to January, the school committee has had three training sessions, has established regular meetings, the chair and the vice chair have established regular meetings with the superintendent. The vice chair and I have a pretty well-open line of communication with the receiver and have not had any information that we have asked for hidden from us. And in fact, I believe other members have actually had sit-down meetings with him recently. And boots have been on the ground visiting all the schools. As a totality, the school committee has visited every school and put their feet in the building and have seen the results that the teachers and the site administration are producing together. The school committee does not stand behind this vote, and I don't understand why, after our discussions, the town council still proceeded to do this no-confidence vote, which, for the record, would be a non-binding resolution, I would presume, because it's not an authoritative order, which, in layman's terms for the general public, in my personal opinion, is nothing but a political statement. It doesn't do anything, it's not going to garner any results that we want. The school committee has to garner these results, and we're actively working to do so. Moving into phase two, probably here after our meeting with the commissioner, if this vote does not occur, we could potentially be out of receivership by the end of the fiscal year, as long as we move forward. It's on us, and we have been putting in the effort. There are three candidates that want to step up and join the school committee in our efforts. This vote will undermine us. Town council chairman, you were the chairman in 2015 of the school committee when that no-confidence vote was held in you. That was disrespectful to the school committee. And the way that we kind of see it is this is completely deterring us off of the path as a town council and school committee working together. I want to continue to work with you guys. You are a wealth of knowledge and experience across the board. But to be quite frank, if you're going to undermine us and ask, hey, do you support a vote of no confidence in the receiver? No, we don't think you should do it. All right, we're just going to do it anyway when it's convenient. That's not how this needs to work. We were working together and we were doing well. Let's continue that work and postpone this vote indefinitely, which should also be a joint vote with the town council and the school committee, not just the town council. If we're going to send that message, let's send it united, but the school committee's not ready to say that because we have had open lines of communication with Dr. Villar. We are working to build strong relationships, and we are communicating effectively to where we're communicating more about literacy rates independently, not just in a presentation, talking about graduation rates, enrollment, capital budget requests, reviewing a budget, which, by the way, I invite everybody, February 11th school committee meeting, MASE will be giving a Chapter 70 on 70, so everybody can learn how the school budget works. I don't want to be divisive because, quite frankly, division doesn't work. It doesn't produce progress. The school committee has been leading the effort on our own to follow this plan, and I would love for the town council to support us and postpone this vote. Everybody agreed to this in leadership, and I understand that, I don't like the guy either. I called for his job a year ago. I started a trending hashtag on Facebook, but we are still managing to develop that collaborative effort to where I communicate with him on an every other daily basis. So please do not take this vote. Don't even take this vote. Postpone it. We have more work to do, and a vote like this is only going to hinder us. Thank you.
State your name. Hi, my name is Esther Vargas, and I live in Springfield, Massachusetts, but I've been working for the Southbridge Public School System for eight years. I have three children that went through Southbridge Public Schools, and I have one who's currently a student at Charlton Street, where I am the school secretary. I'm usually the first person that parents contact with questions, problems, or concerns, and I can't think of one time where a parent has called me regarding issues with Dr. Villar. What I do hear is parents telling me how they work in two jobs yet still cannot find housing they can afford, or parents who need childcare, or parents who cannot find jobs in town yet have no transportation to look elsewhere, parents that are choosing between paying their heating bills or buying food, yet I have never heard of a town council meeting to address those issues. The person that I see addressing those issues is Dr. Villar. Under him, we have opened up morning school programs for children, for parents to drop off early morning programs. We have free after-school care programs. We have our school counselors who work every day to find resources and organizations that can help our parents pay for heating, for water bills, for their rent that sometimes they're getting evicted. I had a family last month that was living in a van, and we were able to get them an organization, and that's all under Dr. Villar with his help, yet I always hear that Dr. Villar doesn't care about these families. He does, because every time I've reached out to him for a family, I've always gotten an answer, and it's always been do what you can. He doesn't have to do that because I believe that's your job, and I've never seen any of you come to Charlton Street to ask what we need or how you can help. We need crossing guards in the morning. You know who's doing that? Our staff, with Dr. Villar's permission. We need bus monitors. You know who's doing that? Our staff, after working a long day, with Dr. Villar's permission. I've never seen any of you visit Charlton Street in the eight years that I've been there and ask how can we help.
We were never allowed to be there. Correct. That's why I was never there.
I believe it's a public building. I will open the door for you. However, people come in every day. Dr. Villar has brought mental health programs to schools to work with students and give access to support. We've brought students food, we've brought them beds. These are all problems that the town should be addressing, but it's the schools under the leadership of Dr. Villar that are finding solutions. And maybe if the town helped resolve some of the issues, then Dr. Villar could focus solely on education, and you would get those fast results you so desperately want. Dr. Villar is not just a name on a piece of paper or a person in an office that we do not see. Our students know him because he's in our building, accessible to everyone at least once a week, but usually twice. No one is trembling when he's in the building, no one's afraid. Teachers are not scared to teach. He does not walk around making people cry or staring menacingly at anyone. He says hello, he listens, he gets advice, he meets with the principal. Just recently, we got him to take a picture with our school elf, and he even smiled. The rumors that he doesn't care about teachers and staff are not true. There have been three instances at Charlton Street that I can think of where staff had issues with administrators, where teachers did not like the way they were being treated or talked to, where they were not happy with the way things were going, and in all three instances, district staff listened to everyone involved and took action by removing those administrators. No one who complained had any type of repercussion. No one lost their jobs, no one was mistreated by Dr. Villar. Teachers who have left the district and then decided to return have been allowed to come back to their jobs without issue. And he has worked with many staff members so that they could stay and continue to teach in our schools. Teachers who have left have told me that other district leaders get excited when they see an application from a teacher who has taught in Southbridge because they've been told that teachers in Southbridge receive the best training in professional development. All of that is under Dr. Villar and his staff. I don't spend much time in classrooms, but I see the programs put in place to help students read better and do work on math skills. I'm the one who takes pictures of the students with their certificates when they move up a level, and I have tons of pictures to show you because our students are learning and making progress. My two daughters went to Charlton Street. They're exceeding MCAS scores. Their new school's always asking me where they came from, and they're surprised when I say it's Southbridge. And it isn't because the new school is teaching them anything great, it's because of the foundation that they got at Charlton Street with all the programs that Dr. Villar put in place. So kids can learn, and they leave, and they do better because of his work. It would be a huge setback to change receivers now because progress is being made, and it's not in the student's best interest to go back to square one and lose everything that has been done. The issues the town has with Dr. Villar seem to be personal ones. I think you just don't like him, but you're not talking to the people that work with him every day that respect him, not only as our boss but as our leader, and that have grown to trust him. I'm not saying it was ideal in the beginning, but he's changed over the years, and so have we, and we found a way to work together, and we genuinely like him. Like I said, I have not seen any members of the council there, so none of you truly knows what happens in our buildings. None of you truly have seen him in action with the children or with the parents. And I'm here with many of my coworkers, who all work for Dr. Villar and who all support him. So I'm asking you to listen to us who are in the buildings every day. I'm telling you that we're good, and we don't need you to do anything but allow Dr. Villar to continue his work because that's the leadership that we trust. Thank you.
Town councillors, town manager, citizens of Southbridge. I come before you to offer you some middle ground. This vote tonight, I see it as a nothing burger with unintended consequences, just like it did in 2015, when ironically, that town council took a vote of no confidence- ironically, that town council took a vote of no confidence in the school committee, which helped open the door to receivership in the first place. I ask you why it was okay for the town council to just say no confidence in the school committee then and hold the receiver accountable for saying it now. It doesn't, it wasn't good then, it shouldn't be that, okay? You can't, you can't do that. Our school committee is starting to train. They have not been training all seven years, eight years of receivership. So he kind of had a point at the time when he said that. Our kids and our teachers have deserved better for a really, really long time. Now, I disagree wholeheartedly with receivership. Just as our forefathers did with taxation without representation, receivership is the failed, modern-day version of that. With no power, no say, with the state. Our fight should be of no confidence in the Massachusetts law that created receivership, with no escape and no measurable plan for success from DESI. Just as you, town officials, pointed the charter in all of your decisions, the state does the same. They point to the state law of receivership, shrug their shoulders, and nothing changes. We have had ten years of finger pointing, and we cannot afford another ten years. As is, tonight's vote just tells the state that you're a juggernaut with the receiver and no closer to working together. This receiver is just the messenger of the state. Why are you trying to shoot the messenger? Our fight is with the State Department of Education and the legislative bureaucrats supporting receivership. The vision of education Chester Mitchell presented to this town in a public meeting at the old high school auditorium was sadly the last public engagement from the state. When Commissioner Mitchell died, so did his vision of receivership for this town. We were left with unfulfilled promises, and the promise of receivership has simply turned into deceivership for Southbridge. That is the state's fault. That is the bureaucratic legislators' fault who voted for it and allow it to continue unchecked. Our fight needs to be with the root cause of receivership and not our unengaged messenger following DESI's marching orders. I implore this council to table this vote or amend the vote to be of no confidence in DESI and the state law of receivership. If you truly want to get the governor's attention, make that amendment tonight. In doing so, you support the citizens' non-binding, town-wide, public vote to defend, vote against receivership. Be our voice. Send an invitation to the governor and to DESI for DESI to come back here to this town in a public-wide meeting to defend itself and offer us a way out. Give them a chance to apologize to failing this town and living up to the promises made to this town. State receivership is our fight, and going after the low-lying fruit here will not accomplish anything other than instability, continuing the death spiral, and creating a deeper hole to dig out of with DESI. We need to keep our eyes on the prize. Who will table this vote or make this amendment? Thank you.
My name is Martha Weaver, 718 South, 718 Main Street, Southbridge. I am, I have sat here listening to everybody's opinions, especially of the teachers. I believe the, um, I'm sorry, I forget what it's called, the voters. I'm so bad with this, and I'm still new to this. Can you correct me, what's the voting called?
Vote of no confidence.
Vote of no confidence. Sorry, I'm bad with terminology, and I'm the first night here. But what I hear from the teachers is that even though with the receivers, sorry, with the receivership of Dr. Valar, and that there have been struggles, and I believe that some of you have feelings about Dr. Valar's thinking or assuming that he's not helping to our schools in Southbridge. But what I have heard from the teachers tonight, they don't want that vote. They don't want you to vote for that, because they worked so hard. And something that I wish I had when I was in school were teachers like them, who want to support their, their students. I didn't have that opportunity when I was in high school. But I do care about the future education of students, and I believe that's something that you guys should take into consideration. I ask that you do not do the vote, the vote of no confidence. I'm so bad with terminology. Like I said, I'm so sorry. I'm so nervous, but I ask that you think about the children's future, the students' future. I understand that Dr. Valar has made some mistakes, but I also understand that through the council of the school, that they are working their butts off. They're doing everything that they can to work with him. And you know, that's something not, not everybody does. Not everybody does that. Not everybody's willing to work their butts off, to work with somebody that may not be the best at what they do. But they are willing to negotiate. They are willing to, they're willing to do this for the children. That's what they're willing to do. They care about the students, and that's what I think you guys should take into consideration, is the children and what their, what their whole purpose is. And if you were to make the vote and say yes, like they said, it would set them back. It would set back tremendous progress, which I also believe, like if they have been working for years with this person, Dr. Valar, why reset the progress and have somebody new? Why reset the foundation? Thank you.
Anybody else would like to address the council on this issue, before we go into deliberation and the vote?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The difficulty that I have is, I've been on the council now two, two years, and I was on private, Florida, but for the last two years, on a regular basis, I've had heard from teachers, school committee members, parents, and children about the problems going on in the school. So I had former school committee members tell me that Dr. Valar, in their meetings, gets up, walks away, says, we're done. I've heard from school committee members complaining that Dr. Valar doesn't go to school committee meetings. I have come to those meetings, and Dr. Valar doesn't come to school committee meetings. He sends his representative. In this turnaround plan, the commissioner said that it was important that Dr. Valar becomes engaged in the community. He can't even attend his own functions at Eastwood Road School for Christmas, Charlton Street School for Christmas. He can't, that's part of his community engagement. I realize he's a busy man, but he should be there for his students and for his teachers. When you leave here tonight, no matter which way the vote goes, I know I am going to still get calls from teachers, administrators, and parents about the problems going on in the school and the lack of parent and support from Dr. Valar. I know the school committee is working very hard. They had a meeting just the other day, I think, policy committee. Dr. Valar wasn't there. I hear from childrens in the schools, and I ask questions. Today was the first time that I've got an answer about room 227 at Charlton Street School. It's a shame when a little kid comes up to me and tells me he fears going into Charlton Street School, room 227, the in-school suspension room. No, that wasn't what I was told from one of your staff that called me today?
Continue.
Room 227, so that's what I'm told. So you can laugh all you want about it. I think it's a serious accusation.
Stay to the issue, counselor.
I'm done. I know where I'm going.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor, uh, Counselor Rowetties?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I appreciate everyone coming out tonight and talking, but where is Valar tonight? Not here, obviously. We're seeking for him to be removed, and he's not even here. Make that make sense. He's not here to protect you guys. He's not here to talk about nothing. You guys are defending him. Why?
Because he's great.
Yeah, he's great. Okay. So was Biden.
No call. Excuse me. Continue, Counselor Ties.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Heard a lot of people's talk tonight, and many of teachers, teachers that I don't know, but I do know a lot of teachers in the school district, in the school district who have over the years. And they have told me a lot, many things, much in opposite to what you have told, said tonight. I've, I've heard many complaints about the school system, and I've watched this for quite some time. Receivership doesn't work, bottom line. We all know that, and it's time to end. Now that said, I am interested in what the school committee has to say, and I've talked to a number of you over the, over the weekend. And I, I feel that this body should give some deference to the board, to the school committee. You are elected officials, but at the same time, I think we all have to recognize that what you are fighting for is the end of receivership, but yet you have no timeline. There is no promise from the state or even a goal date yet. That's all I think I'm asking for, is a goal date. When, when does the state expect us to get out? Now, Dr. Valar has made his own bed, if you will. He has, he has refused to attend school committee meetings. He's been invited by this board body to attend council meetings. He's refused. He is not engaged at all with any of the elected boards in this town. I had the opportunity over the weekend to speak with officials from Holy, Holyoke. And they tell me that they're, one of the reasons they're getting out of receivership, and they're practically, they're pretty much out of it at this point. But one of the things that their receiver did, which ours did not, was kept the school committee engaged, was kept the school committee involved in the budget process. So then when the time came to exit receivership, the school committee was already trained. Dr. Valar has refused to do that. He refused to engage with the school board at all. All right. I believe in principle in this vote, but I want to offer a motion to postpone the vote in deference to the school committee until February 24th.
Motion to postpone until the 24th?
Second.
Discussion on postponement. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I believe a postponement is warranted at this time. It allows the process, which is relatively recent, to play out a little bit longer. It allows the school committee to have a little more involvement with the process, and I believe that in about four weeks, I guess it is, it allows the school committee to come back to us and tell us, hey, look, things haven't changed, things have gotten worse, or things continue to get better and things continue to improve. I think that I acknowledge and understand that there's a long history, a long history of grievances, eight years' worth of grievances. And I don't disregard them. However, it seems that things have changed. Back in May, the turnaround plan was signed by various interested parties, and it seems that although there have been a couple of fits and starts, the plan has come into play and that it is moving. And at this point in time, I think that we need to give it a little more time to play out and see what's happening with it. So I think that the counselor's motion to postpone is warranted at this time. Thank you.
Any further discussion on postponement? Counselor Rivas?
So I would also be in favor of postponement if that meant, you know, giving the school committee more time to, you know, gather more information. I'm encouraged, and I, and I like the ideas from the SCA leadership around revamping the turnaround plan. And just for clarification, the DESI plan for the school committee is, is a different document than the turnaround plan. And the SCA leadership's suggestion around school councils, that is something that I am in agreement and would support and help in any way that I can. You know, those are some elements that were in the Thrive Act, they're familiar, that I was able to advocate for when the Thrive Act was in front of the legislature. So those are things that I do feel would advance and, and move forward in a quicker way. And like I said, I would support that, and I'm in favor of postponement, again, to give the school committee more time, and, you know, possibly Dr. Valar may, may want to come to that meeting.
Any other discussion by counsel on postponement? If not, roll call vote on postponing. Yes will postpone, no will not. I'm all set. If I need somebody to direct me over here, I'll ask. Go ahead.
Counselor Lozo.
Oh, Jesus. No.
Counselor Montigny.
No.
Counselor Chenier.
No.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
No.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz.
No.
And Counselor Rivas.
Yes.
Motion does not pass. Back to the main motion. We're back to the motion of vote of no confidence. Counselor Dow, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Chair, through you. It's funny and shame at the same time. All this work we did as a counselor, somebody come up here a year and a half ago, was crying. We have no power, no authority. We can't speak to him. He wouldn't attend any meeting. They wouldn't meet at that time, the school committee. They have no meeting, whatever. I suggest to still meet and create a file, talk to the teacher, what's the issue? He looked at me and laughed. I don't know, maybe the way I look, or my accent, or whatever it is, he thinks they're smarter than everybody. But now he came up again, and he's pointing at the chair and all these council. He's the power. The way he speaks is like, we, the school committee, nobody. We all family in this town. This is a town of Southbridge, and we share everything, and we do it in one hand. We did what we did because you came in here, and you tell us, help us. We need your help. We can't do anything. We lost our control for the school. You have no meeting, no schedule, nothing. Chair, town manager, where our support came up, met, and make all this plan. Chair, Town Manager, where our support came up, met, and make all this plan to happen. And now, because he's respond back and he's care, Dr. Valar, and he know it's coming, he's tired, acting, he's working with the school committee. I think it's enough, we're not a kid in here, we're not a playing game, we represent the citizen of Southbridge. I understand some teacher came here, they have concern, with my respect to them, most of them, none of them live in the town. I represent the citizen of Southbridge. They vote for me, I'm gonna forward their vote, what they want. They want to move Dr. Valar, they want the school back, and that's what I'm gonna do tonight. I don't care, I respect everybody came here and speak, but I have a job to do to represent the citizen who vote for me in the town of Southbridge, and that's what I'm gonna do tonight. Thank you.
Counselor, would you like to speak? You had your first?
Please. I'm the first teacher at the school and co-president of the SCA. I want to stress what Chairman March said before about collaboration. Although it is true that Holy Oak and Lawrence are facing a pathway out of receivership, it is not without stipulations. This includes half of the school committee being appointed by the state. So in reality, it's trading receivership as it looks now for another form. The SCA is here tonight to ask if you will support us in revising the school turnaround, the district turnaround plan to contain an end date and benchmarks so that it is clear that we have a path forward out of receivership and collaboration between all stakeholder bodies. Thank you.
Stephanie Rivers?
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Rivers. I reside at 92 Harrington Street. Where was the SCA before tonight? Where's the SCA last year, um, when the school committee did come to the town council and ask for help and before the school committee voted on the DESI document? And by the way, page three of the DESI document states that at any time, the commissioner and the receiver, if they feel the school committee has not met the items from phase one and phase two, can put them back at the beginning. That's page three of that DESI document. You talk about transition, you talk about a turnaround plan. I did a feasibility study for the school system and what the key areas were for improvement and identified those key areas. And I had that turnaround plan in my feasibility study and I talked about it at past meetings. So you want to improve the school system, you want to take care of the key items for improvement, start attending the school committee meetings and start collaborating with the school committee and help them. And not just show up tonight and say, don't vote, don't vote, this is why. Help them every time they have a school committee meeting. Come and collaborate with the school committee. The key areas for improvement are attendance, graduation, suspension rates, curriculum, facilities. You want to improve those areas, you need to work on them every time there's a meeting and be there and show up, not just come one time when there's a vote for no confidence in a receiver that has been here for eight years and has shown he can't lead and has shown no results, no ROI, no positive ROI on the investment that has been put on the town of Southbridge, in the Southbridge public school system by the state. The graduation rates from last year to this year dropped almost 5%. I don't know what they're gonna be this year, those, that information hasn't come in yet. The Southbridge school system has been in receivership for nine years based on a small group of people back in 2015 that went to the high school and said, help us, to the then-commissioner who was there, and said, help us, we want you to come in, we want you to take over, help us. And he listened to them. There was one man there that night, Scott Lazo, who said, this is a mistake, don't do it, don't come into Southbridge, don't take over the school system. No one listened. Here we are, 10 years later. Jessica Zingo was here for two years. She had a more positive influence in two years than Valar has had in the eight years he's been in seat. Where's our ROI nine years later? We have no results. We have a small handful of, of teachers from Charlton Street coming up and saying, Valar is great, we love him, he's great. Where are the teachers from the high school? Why haven't you come up to speak? One, I know you came up to speak, but there's, there's two that raised their hand.
Continue, or, no. Keep this discussion here, please.
We sat and watched and waited every year for results on this state receivership. We sat and watched and waited for no results that didn't show up. But yet Jeffrey Valar went back to DESI every three years and said, there's still no progress, I need another three-year extension. And he was granted a three-year extension, and he was granted a three-year extension. And this year in November, he's going to go back to DESI again and say, there's still no progress, I need another three-year extension. Jeffrey Valar is here until he retires, and we have spent our taxpayer dollars in excess of over a quarter of a million dollars every year to pay him to go back to DESI and ask for another three-year extension. Now I know the school committee says they're working hard and they are working hard, and they don't want to see it changed and they don't want to see a new receiver come in, but something needs to change because we've been in receivership for 10 years and will still be in receivership for another three years if he's left unchecked, and we need to get out of receivership. We need an exit date. There's no exit date in place. The former commissioner, when this all began, said three years. He lied. It's been 10 years. We need an exit date. There's no exit date in that DESI document, not, not, nothing concrete. It's all open-ended. Our kids last year stood up and protested at the high school for change. We ran and we supported those kids. We stood with them, we supported them, we activated with them, we provided them with food, blankets, hand warmers, and whatever else was needed while they stood outside for days and requested change. Change never came, so it was all for nothing. In the end, no change occurred, their voices once again were silenced by authoritarian leadership. Now it's our turn. We asked the town council for help, and the town council is listening, and the town council wants to help, and we all need to stand up now. It's not going to be easy, and while roadblocks are being thrown up left and right from listening to what people had to say tonight from the receiver who's in place, we need to take a stand once and for all, and we need to make a change now to get out of receivership. So I'm here tonight to ask the town council to go forward with your vote of no confidence for the receiver and request to the state commissioner of DESI to please give us a receiver who's going to work with our school system and get us out of receivership. And the reason why Holy Oak is leaving receivership is because they had a mayor stand up on television and say he doesn't believe DESI knows what they're doing. And that, to Boston, to government, they don't like that kind of talk, and that's why that got a little bit more accelerated, and yes, they have a better receiver than we do, but their mayor stood up and took a stand and said enough was enough. And that's why they're on the track out of receivership, and we need to do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, can we, go ahead.
Can I make a motion, move the question, please?
I'd rather not. Uh, can we just listen to less, the rest of these two citizens? Does anybody have anything new to add that haven't already spoke yet? Mr. Palowski, she has not spoke yet.
Hi.
We want to wind this up, we have a, a long agenda ahead of us.
I do want to be quick, and I, I wasn't sure I was gonna say anything. Um, my name is Rose Sherbom, I work at Charlton Street Elementary School, I'm an adjustment counselor there. I was there for the protests at the high school last year, um, and what I saw was a bunch of misguided teenagers fighting for a cause that was fueled by adults with an agenda. What I see a lot of here is an agenda for power. Our kids have no power. They're the ones we need to be focused on and what is best for them, not what we want to see, not we want to take control back, we want an end date. I understand you want an end date, but at what cost? The school committee has clearly stated that they are working together. We're finally starting to see the change that you wanted to see, and you want to end it. I, I just, I can't possibly fathom, and you had asked, um, and this is with all due respect, you had asked us why we stand here for Dr. Valar? Because when we're in the trenches every day with the kids who are afraid of going to 227 because they disrespected a teacher or because they hit one of their classmates or because they spit on us, you know who's there? Dr. Valar. Dr. Valar is in the school with us. That's why we stand here for him. And again, you can have your own agenda, but the tides are turning, the tides are turning. And I've been here long enough to see that some people here are not speaking with an agenda because they may not like Dr. Valar, you may not like what, him as a person, it has nothing to do with that, it has to do with our kids. And our kids are starting to succeed. What's behind those numbers are names, names of kids that I can tell you would have never graduated last year unless they, unless Dr. Valar was there to give us permission to say, yes, run that extra credit program, run that, run that program online, help them, work through that. If you have the time, absolutely go do it. None of that would have been possible, and I could give you five names off the top of my head, of kids who would have never graduated without that. And now they do, and they work full-time, and they're successful. They're not a statistic, they didn't drop out. Do we have those? Yes, we do. But it's getting better, but don't stop the progress now.
Yeah, I've tried to do that. Have you guys, have you esteemed counselors looked at the possibility that when you go and you take a professional in Boston, brings down a million bucks every three years, that if you go and throw stuff around, it's nonspecific language, saying you have no confidence without saying why you don't have any confidence? Are you putting the town in a position where we're gonna continue to be paying him money because he's gonna get litigious, because we're giving him a reason, we're, we're smearing the man's career? We gotta be careful. It may be true, we may have good reasons, but I respectfully beg you to be more specific, give the reasons. I think those of you that think voting to get rid of him, I, I think it's gonna be looked at and, and by Boston is political bloviating. We, we need to focus, say what's wrong, maybe even be a little nice, the guy, for the first time in 10 years, I've been hearing a little bit of good stuff about him. I didn't even know this was on the agenda today. I'm, I couldn't figure out how to look at the agenda for tonight. I didn't even talk about what's coming, and I'm gonna get off here, but please put it off at least a week. And once again, respect the elected school committee. When you go and you do their work, you're showing disrespect for an elected body. It's like the Senate telling people how the Supreme Court should be doing their job. Give, give, give this a chance, and, uh, we've got some other problems in town we can look at too, but this guy, I, I think we should be more careful about how we try to remove him, because I don't think Boston's gonna take this vote any more seriously, one way or, or the other, than they took the vote of the people. It's gonna be non-binding. So why, why make the scene about it? Enough scene was made tonight, they can watch this on video, they know there's a problem. Let's push the governor, let's write letters as individuals to the governor, let's ask our state representatives as individuals, yous out there, to look into this and bring back our town's schools department. That's all we gotta do. Ask our state reps to get involved. Let it be done behind the scenes before we end up having to pay that man $100,000 a year for the rest of his life because we've shamed him in a, in a premature action before
Did you want to talk? You all set?
Hi, Aaron Milgram, I'm a high school teacher, computer science, um, I live in Oxford, 30th Air Pond Drive, apartment seven. Uh, so, um, uh, to begin with, I was here last year during protests, um, in this very room, along with the community session before that, to listen to the students and hear what they had to say at that time. I know that this town has been through a lot within receivership, and as an early service teacher, this is my, only my second year as a teacher, um, I probably don't have all the context in the world for what has gone on here. That said, I have seen the schools improve from last year to this year. Similarly, um, I did pre-practicum and practicum in Boston, so I at least have some context in terms of how their schools compare. I did practicum at Boston Latin School, known as one of the, like, best schools in the state, and I did practicum at Madison Park, which is still in Boston, but is one of the schools which, um, I think, I think compared to Southbridge, I'd say Southbridge, at least of when I did practicum, is actually in a better spot. Surprisingly enough, I suppose. Um, so, um, I am going to go and urge the esteemed council here to listen to your school Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, do you have anything new to add and make it short?
Very short.
I'm cutting off public. I want to hear from everybody, but not all night long.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The previous speaker mentioned that the receiver went to the state three times, renewed, renewed, renewed. She made my point. It's the State Department of Education. She made my point, and I hope you heard it. And we praise our police, we praise our fire, to hear someone come up here and say, the teachers, where are you? It's disheartening. They work hard, they work very hard, they work from seven, some of them, till 7:00 PM. They're employees of this town, and I'm shocked that none of you said anything to support them. The state is our problem, please make the amendment for the State Department of Education's no confidence.
Counselor Rivas, public forums off, counselors, we're gonna vote, last time around, go on. Go ahead, anything new to add to this?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The voters voted for us to be out of receivership. There was no vote from the voters about Dr. Valar, that was not on the ballot. At the time when students were protesting, I support students 100% and their right to protest and use their civil, civil right to do that. I 100% support that, as I did then, as I would today if they were protesting. At that time, the students and families that we met with asked us to advocate to get rid of receivership. This is the path out of receivership that we've been given. At that time, um, school committee member Carla de la Cruz and I went to the State House, we advocated with some of the teachers here, um, in front of the legislature in favor of the Thrive Act, which would have created an immediate exit out of receivership. No other counselor, the only other counselor that was on the call was Counsel Marquetti. We were told that a bus lo, a bus was gonna be rented, that people were going to go up to Boston together. That did not happen. And so we can still do that and advocate with our state legislators against the receivership law. But what we've been given since June that we agreed on, that the leadership of this body agreed on, along with the other leaders in June, was to follow this plan for the school committee. school committee. And that's what I intend to do. I do not think, and I know, that people up here that know better, know that this no-confidence vote is not going to lead to Dr. Villar's dismissal or a broken contract. It is not. And if they tell you differently, that is not being truthful. This is honest town. Let's be honest with our voters who voted to be out of receivership, and this is the path out of receivership. Thank you.
Got to get some cheering coaches up at the high school. Go ahead, Councilor Montigny.
Thank you.
I'm getting punchy.
Thank you, Chairman Lozo. I just wanted to remind everybody once again, I work for the voters, the citizens, and the families and children of this town, Dr. Villar and receivership, but receivership has been Dr. Villar for seven out of nine years. They have killed your property value. Businesses do not want to come here because Dr. Villar has helped plummet your property value and screw up your taxes, and that is a fact. Thank you.
I'd just like to take a minute. I went to Holyoke and met with the mayor and the chairman of their council and the chairman of their school committee, and we sat down and we were going to get together and put together a class action suit against the state. The photo op went out, the town manager, myself, and then all of a sudden, two days later, the phone call made, and Holyoke gets notified they can come out. Why did Holyoke come out faster? First of all, they appointed a receiver that was their business manager who ran their finances. So the gentleman that actually did the transition was a transitional receiver with the school committee, which they went to work right away. The receiver, which was the business manager, the subcommittees started working on different things such as budget. The finance director would come in, and school committee members would work and learn the budget. Curriculum would have a curriculum person commit and work with the school committee. This is how a functioning school committee works. I've served on a school committee. We had a level-one high school when I was on the school committee, a level-three middle school, and two level-two elementary schools. We had no level-four or five. We were taken over for political reasons. In looking at how to get out of it, the one thing that I do know, Mr. Villar, and I asked him straight to his face, do you think you're the man for this job of transition? Now I kicked the door in and moved things around. He's moved his office numerous times from the high school to that old high school. We've had a revolving door in various positions. Every time we get a good principal that's doing a good job, we move him to the front office to work with him. We had a business company running our finances. Now we finally have a business manager who's working well. He is not a transitional receiver. That I see. I've served long enough under three or four different superintendents, and Dr. Hanley was the last one, who was a fantastic superintendent. When we built that school, the middle high school, on the bronze plaque is a coined phrase that I coined as a chairman of the council school committee. Kids first, striving for excellence. If you do not do that, you shouldn't be working here. The teachers are the MVPs. They're boots on the ground. The principal was given all the power through reform to control their building. They thought it would be a better management tool. I lived through all of the changes. I lived through the MCAS testing. I'm not a fan to make it a graduating requirement. I voted against it, and I think that moving forward, I'm going to support a vote of no confidence, only because when I sat in the office and asked Mr. Villar personally, one-on-one, do you think you're the man for the job? He couldn't answer the question. You have to believe in yourself before people have to believe in you. I sit here, I started my career back in the 80s. You can giggle, it's a fun thing, I guess. People cheer, it's a good thing for your opinion. We work for the taxpayers of Southbridge. We work for the people of Southbridge, the kids of Southbridge. We want a good school system. Don't ever think that this council is not supporting that school committee. That school committee just gained two great leaders, Davidson and De la Cruz. And I think these two girls are going to be the one-two punch to put that school committee back together. And I've seen chairmen come and go. They talk a great game and do nothing. They're on many boards, and they do nothing on many boards. This council has been a unified machine. We want to stick together and get things done. We disagree. Tonight, we're going to disagree. That doesn't mean we don't go back to work with that school committee. We can't wait to appoint two more people to that school committee, to give them the workability as a full committee. Right now, they're too short. So moving forward, they had a, the state came up with an idea, abolished the school committee and put it under the Council Education Human Services, run it like Worcester. Make the mayor the chairman of the school committee. We said that unacceptable. We need our citizens volunteering that are educational experts in that field to work with the schools, work with the parent groups. Every time I bring up an idea like, where's your student rep? We always had a student rep. Mr. Villar didn't want a student rep. When they wanted to make parent outreach groups, well, let's not do that. We're not ready right now. It's been a delay-a-game for nine years. I sit here tonight, and I'm all filled with the delay-a-game. It's time to do decisions. Councils get a job to do. Vote your conscience, what you think is in the best interest of this town. But I can guarantee you this. I know what a superintendent looks like. That's not one that is ready for transitional. Transitional is a different model. It's not the one that stays all, like, for 15 years. It's the one that comes in, strains it up, stands it up, gets it to move, and then moves on. And then after you appoint your superintendent, that's going to be your long-term superintendent. I volunteered with the chairman of the council, which we have a tremendous amount of experience as school committee members and chair and subcommittees and all those wonderful things. We're offering to have mock meetings. I bought parliamentary books to learn how to run the meeting, to learn. You have an emotional issue here. I see the cheers. I don't want to be disrespectful. But the decorum in the meeting calls for a certain, you know, I didn't really, I want to hear from everybody. Whether I agree with you or not is not important. What's important is to be heard, and then we're going to take it all in and make our decision. So for me, I can't support Mr. Villar. I sat, and I'm still in these meetings with the Commissioner Johnson. The blueprint's laid out. This blueprint's going to go forward with or without Villar. It's not an end-all, Mr. Villar. But this is what we're going to do. This is part of the process. We have a meeting coming up. I'm going to be meeting with Juan Rodriguez. This gentleman has the temperament and the knowledge to help this turnaround. That's somebody that was not on the playing field before. Everybody wants to say Mr. Villar has changed. Mr. Villar has not changed. Mr. Villar's been ordered by the state to change, or else. Now we need to send a message that it's or else. We cannot further this tomorrow, tomorrow, tomorrow. This is what we've been fed. I've been in it long enough that I don't see the light at the end of the tunnel like everybody else does until we change our position. And the school committee, you've got to, when, once we do the reappointments, I think we're going to have a good school committee after reorganization. You'll see a different leadership. But I think that the town council has volunteered to do whatever it takes to work with that school committee, to turn this school district around. We need our district back under local control. Remember, dictatorships don't work. And when we have a receiver that doesn't interest anybody in this town, and we're paying his salary, and we're paying all the freight, it's just unfair. And it's not right, and I don't really think he has a lot of heart, Southbridge. You don't see him around town. You just see him eight to five. No further discussion? I'd like to call for a roll call vote. I'd just like to remind, a yes vote is in favor of the no-confidence vote. You'll sign the paper. I will take it to Boston. If it is a no vote, you're not in favor of the vote that's being taken to take that letter to Boston. Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Shenier?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
No.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Rivas?
No.
Counselor Lozo? Six yes, three no.
Six yes, three no. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, if we could please take a five-minute recess to sign the letter. Thank you.
At this time, our agenda item number 13, vote to pay the balance of a prior FY24 Police Department invoice to NRG, Direct Energy, in the amount of $274.49 to be paid from FY25 funds in account number 01900210-521100. Administration, Police, Natural Gas, two-thirds vote required. Do I have a motion?
Some.
There's a motion in a second? Counselor Dow?
This is what's 4-2-0 at the subcommittee.
Favorable at PPP? Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 14, vote to transfer $4,300 from account 001210-511000, salaries and wages to account 001210525100, maintenance of equipment to cover the cost to fray and index the database from our computer, aided dispatch, all services, and backups, Police Department.
Some.
Motion in a second. Counselor Dow?
It was 4-2-0 at the subcommittee meeting.
4-0 at subcommittee? Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Vote to transfer $28,950 from account 001210511000, salary and wages to account 2180005700080200, State Law Enforcement Trust, to cover future costs of narcotic and criminal investigations, Police Department.
Some.
Motion second?
What's 4-0 at the subcommittee meeting?
Unanimous at subcommittee? Any further discussion? Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What exactly is the State Law Enforcement Trust, and how do they help us with narcotic and criminal investigations?
I'll defer to the chief on the specifics of that fund. This was part of the opera funding. We, due to discussion with the auditor, the way we had to account for the monies for a certain portion of that previous item, we, all we're doing is taking a salary out of the existing salary account to pay for activities relative to what the opera decision was and transfer the money to that law enforcement trust fund for the other activities. But as far as the trust fund itself, I'll let the chief talk to that, but that was the auditor's recommendation to do so.
Chief, good evening, members of the council and Mr. Town Manager. So through you, Mr. Chair, the law enforcement trust account is just simply where we put money that's seized from narcotics cases. So if we do a search warrant, we seize a large amount of money that goes into that account to be spent on our detective unit purchasing narcotics, things like that, exactly what we talked about during that opera meeting that we had.
Okay, so it...
Any further discussion?
So it does help, I just wanted to finish up. It does help with your narcotic investigations in town? In what way? By having a fund that you can go to and use the money to...
Yeah, and if I, without getting too into a public meeting, we have funds in place to purchase narcotics in the community, to put together narcotics investigations. These things require funding. I'll be happy to explain to you offline, but that's where this money from the State Law Enforcement Trust is used. So essentially, we're seizing money. When the court issues a guilty verdict, we get that money. We have to put it someplace. It goes into a trust account, which is monitored by the Finance Department and the Treasurer's Office, and we take funds from that account to do ongoing investigations.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 16, vote to transfer $75,000 from account 00122051100, salaries and wages to account 001220513000, overtime, Fire Department.
Some.
Motion by Shenier, seconded by Dow. Discussion?
It was unanimous 4-2-0 at the subcommittee.
Unanimous in favor at subcommittee? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 17, vote to accept a donation of $15,000 from the United Lands and allow the chief of police to use it under his discretion.
Some.
Second.
Motion by Shenier, seconded by Ari Ortiz.
There was unanimous at the subcommittee, 4-2-0.
Unanimous at subcommittee? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 18, vote to authorize the implementation of the municipal local cybersecurity grant program to strengthen cybersecurity and reduce future cyber risks for the police and fire departments, costs associated with the transition to cloud-based software.
Some. Second.
Motion by Shenier, seconded by Ortiz.
It was unanimous 4-2-0 at the subcommittee.
Unanimous at subcommittee in favor? Discussion?
Through you. There was conversations about the increased costs. We got into this, and a total amount that would come back not to exceed. So the increased cost in FY26 minus the current $35,000 appropriate for IT services for the town to not exceed $30,000 from the Police Department and $30,000 for the Fire Department, and the FY26 operating budget will not exceed $95,000. So it's, that would be the not to exceed $95,000 as requested by the town.
Counselor Rivas?
I'd like to offer an amendment.
Go ahead.
To add the amount not to exceed $95,000.
Is a motion in a second on the amendment to add the numbers to the agenda item. Any discussion on the amendment?
Thank you, Chair. Through you, I understand, you know, it's good to have an amount there, but if we need another thousand somewhere, that mean the whole deal failed?
I, that was, I think the chief did build in a contingency. We would just, when we do the budget, we'll get exact cost, and when we present the budget for FY26, because this will be part of the next year's budget presentation. So there was an idea of cost forwarding for next year, so we'll have the exact number when it gets closer to budget time. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the manager. So in layman's terms, this amendment would not ruin this deal?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. The main motion has amended with the numbers on it. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 19, vote to increase retirees' COLA base pay from $14,000 to $18,000 effective July 1, 2025, as recommended by the Southbridge Retirement Board.
Some.
Second.
Motion by Shenier, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion? Counselor Kelly?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. This matter was taken up by the General Government Subcommittee on January, I mean, January 22nd, and unanimously recommended by the committee.
Favorable at subcommittee? Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I did get a chance to watch the General Government Subcommittee meeting, and I listened to the discussion on this agenda, and I don't have a problem supporting it, but I did have, I didn't have a question about why they keep bringing up somebody like, a town like Webster, comparing Southbridge to Webster. Webster, their base salary is $18,000, whereas Southbridge is only $14,000, like as if we're lacking or we're not keeping up with other towns. But, and if you want to go, if you want to compare Southbridge to Webster, I don't have a problem with that, but let's compare Southbridge to Webster. Webster doesn't pay their retirees any health insurance. insurance, whereas Southbridge does pay their retirees health insurance. It's not much, it's fifty-fifty, but we do provide them with some health insurance. So perhaps if they want to keep comparing us to Webster, maybe we should do like Webster and do away with their retirement, or with their health insurance. I don't really want to do that, but I would just as soon not have these constant comparisons with other communities. When Southbridge, I think is, I think Southbridge treats their employees pretty well, and I just get a little tired of hearing that, but I don't have any problem with this vote at all. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed?
I'm sorry. Oh, no, go ahead.
In unanimous of all present. Moving on to twenty, vote to proceed forward, let's see, vote to proceed forward with the town clerk's request to opt out of the early voting on, by mail, for the Southbridge Town election, to be held on June of two thousand twenty-five in accordance with the Vote Action two thousand twenty-two, ineffective as of June two thousand twenty-two, Section twenty-five B, schedule a public hearing.
Some. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Discussion? If, Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, this matter was taken up by the General Government Subcommittee on January twenty-second and was unanimously recommended to the council.
Counselor Rivas?
While I appreciate the clerk's reasoning behind this, I'm really concerned about anything that limits the democratic process, especially when we only have one polling place in the whole community. I think we have an aging population to think about, and mail-in voting is something that maybe people don't utilize all the time now, but that may be something that I think it should always be an option, and I'm not in favor of moving this forward.
Mr. Town Manager?
This does not eliminate mail-in ballot, the ability to mail in your ballots. You could still do it, you just have to contact the town clerk's office. All this is doing is simply not sending postcards to every registered voter to say, "Do you want a mail-in ballot?" So you're still allowing them to do it. We will gladly put it out on social media, put it out on TV, put out, this is, it's very costly to send out every postcard. So she's not eliminating at all, the town clerk is not eliminating the ability to have a mail-in ballot. You could still have a mail-in ballot, you just simply have to contact the town clerk's office.
I think the participation was really low in the actual mail-in ballot, and that's why she thought it wasn't financially feasible for the, for what you were getting.
It's really the mail-in of the postcards.
Okay.
All right, so, and then the mail-in of the ballot.
The absentee ballot still...
Okay, so if you want it, you can still get it, we'll still send it to you, and you still have the ability to do, cast a mail-in ballot.
All right, I guess I would, I would move it forward to a hearing, but I'd love to hear more about how we would get information out to voters that that is still an option for them.
Counselor Marketti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually appreciate getting that postcard, and I do use the mail-in ballot. I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to ask if the totals are more or less. I would want to know, are the people who do vote, are more of them using the mail-in ballot? That's what I would want to know. So I appreciate getting that postcard, and I wouldn't be in favor of this either. I think, I think the state should actually chip in and pay for this, in my own opinion.
So this is not a vote to eliminate, this was simply moved to a public hearing. And the council would still have to take a vote afterwards, after the public hearing. So we have the opportunity to have the people heard.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dell?
Thank you, Chair. Through you, like the chair said, it's not a lot of people returning the card. We're just looking at the cost. It's almost ten thousand dollars, those cards to go out. We're not eliminate, if the citizen call, we will mail him a card, and they can vote through the mail. But that's like ten thousand dollars, and I think it's a waste of money, not because the clerk said there's only maybe one to ten percents return the card. That's all. Thank you.
Any further, Counselor Montigny?
Yeah, thank you. And to back up the last two previous speakers, I think they would have to send it to all thirteen, fourteen thousand voters. That number comes closer to fifteen thousand dollars there, and that's the ballot. The postcard beforehand is another chunk. It pushes it up to twenty thousand. And while I can appreciate the voters that do usually vote that got it, you know, we don't need to spend the two dollars per voter to get them to go. They already go. The ones that didn't ever vote was extremely small and not worth twenty thousand dollars of Southbridge taxpayer money. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Counselor Shenyu?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Marketti?
No.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Rivas?
I'm going to say yes.
Okay. Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
And Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to twenty-one, vote to transfer seven thousand one hundred and three dollars and forty-eight cents from the account two-one-eight-zero-zero-zero-five-nine-six-five-zero-zero-eight-zero-three-three-zero, recycling revolving fund, to account six-two-zero-one-three-zero-four-nine-five-two-zero-zero, curbside enterprise fund, Town Accountant's Office.
Some. Second.
Motion by Shenyu, seconded by Ortiz. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, this matter was taken up by the General Government Subcommittee on January twenty-second and was unanimously recommended to the council.
Any further discussion? Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So how would this, these funds be used? Has anybody offered that?
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
The funds would just be part of the curbside enterprise fund, so the solid waste enterprise fund. So they just go there and be within the main, retained earnings for use for the curbside account. These were for the total recycling funds, so we cannot keep a revolving fund any longer because we have the curbside fund. So you can't have two similar purpose funds. So the DOR has, Department of Revenue, has requested that we close this account out. I'll be coming, I did speak to the chairman of General Government. We'll be coming forward with a bylaw amendment to eliminate the total recycling revolving fund bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed. In unanimous of all present. Moving on to twenty-two, vote to accept the Community First Partnership Grant in the amount of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars per year for FY twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
Some. Second.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Shenyu. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was voted four-o to move forward.
In unanimous at the subcommittee. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed. In unanimous of all present. Moving on to twenty-three, vote to authorize applying for the Mass Saves Municipal Energy Management Grant to hire a part-time energy manager to be combined with the Community First Partnership, and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
Some.
Second.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Shenyu. Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was voted four-o to move forward.
In unanimous at the subcommittee. Peg Dean, welcome.
Hi, good evening. I, forgive me, I don't want to drag the meeting out any longer than it needs to be, but I did want to just mention that Amanda from ICAC is here. She did travel quite a ways to be here to answer any questions. She was on subcommittee virtually, and she is, she's the one who's helped us apply for, and be awarded the last grant, is helping us with this grant, and also is advising us a little bit where she can on other things like chargers. So I don't, I don't know if anyone would want to hear anything from her, but I did want to just say thank you to her publicly for traveling.
Thank you. Any questions by counsel? Counselor Marketti?
Thank you. I did watch the meeting. I was just wondering, what exactly is this person going to be doing in the town hall? I heard some comments about what they would be doing. I wasn't, it wasn't quite clear to me exactly what their job would be.
Well, I'll let Amanda, if I may, go, but we do have a number of green community grants that we have for energy management within our buildings, and further opportunities because of the type of community act, to apply for additional grants. And definitely, our capacity between our road projects and our various other grants is stretched very thin as it is right now. This would be a great opportunity to have somebody to manage those programs for us, apply for additional funding, and also manage the grants and the scheduling. And I'll turn it over to Amanda for anything else.
Amanda, welcome.
Thank you. So in addition to, to that grant management, the municipal energy manager role, typically that person is liaising with Department of Public Works, any school facilities, any kind of staff members from the town who work on buildings, to look for opportunities to make improvements to town-owned buildings, schools and other town-owned buildings, and essentially to help save energy and save on utility bills for the town, as well as pursue other kind of energy and climate-related goals for town buildings. They do quite a bit of seeking out and applying for grants that might be available from the state or federal government, including but not limited to the Department of Energy Resources Green Communities funding, that the town could pursue each year to, to do similar projects to save energy, do energy efficiency and electrification, and other kind of upgrades to town buildings. And we do have the, the sample job description that's part of the energy manager grant, and the town will be able to, the town manager will be able to edit that job description, should the town be awarded the funding, so that it fits the needs of the community.
Have we had problems in the past with getting these grants, these green energy grants? Because it seems like every year, we're voting on a green energy grant.
I don't think we have a problem getting the grants, it's the management of the grants afterwards. So, you know, PEG is, you know, between the RACE grant that we have and all the paperwork for all the CDVGs and everything else, Rich, either the DPW director or PEG has to manage these grants and the reporting of those grants, and we have an opportunity to have somebody at no cost to the town to be able to do that and take some of the load off of our, our issue.
I'm not understanding what you mean by managing the grant. You get the grant, the grant comes in.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, it's simply not getting the money, and then you're good. There's a lot of paperwork that goes with it.
Usually the hard work starts after we get the money. And so, just to give an example, there have been more funding opportunities for energy efficiency than ever that we're trying to go after. The ECGB is for upgrades at the police station. There's weatherization happening at the library. There's work at the DPW. And so, you know, I'm not a facilities manager, I'm just, I work with the grants. And Rich is obviously stretched, and so, like the town manager said, this would be a huge resource for the town to be able to manage. We've asked Katie to take on the green communities. She's just barely learned it. If we can now hand it off to someone who would be more expert in it, that would be able to freak her up to focus more on things like the bigger planning opportunities for her.
All right.
It just would be a great opportunity at no cost. I mean, our office today was, hey, can you schedule for the community center? Rich is trying to do transition with the wastewater treatment plant. PEG's got her grants. It's just, it'd be great to have somebody to be able to manage this as we see it through, for right now. I think we've talked in the past in the budget to have a facilities manager. If we had a facilities manager, that would be an opportunity for them to do it, but this is a way to transition to something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed. In unanimous of all present. Moving on to twenty-four, vote to authorize applying for the Mass CEC On Street EV Charging Station Program, excuse me, Charging Solutions Program, funding, and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
Some. Second.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Dow. Counselor?
This was voted four-nothing to move forward.
Four-nothing, unanimous at the subcommittee. Counselor Marketti, how do you handle it?
Yeah, thank you. I was just going to make a suggestion that we just get rid of the EV chargers out here, just completely get rid of them. And as far as EV charging in town, let private businesses deal with that. That's all. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Town Manager.
As far as the charger goes here, we do have it under contract. They will be installing the new charger to charge individuals. Didn't get rid of the free charger that was signed about two weeks ago, so that will be scheduled out. That was approved before. So I'll just leave it for this specific one, because I think PEG knows my comments on, on this specific building and the council's comments on this one.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If no further discuss... What?
Mike Murray. A few years ago, when the EV situate charging stations first started coming out, I made some phone calls. What I said then was this was the biggest boondoggle that Southbridge was ever considering. We had, the answer to that was, well, we have a president who has an EV verdict, and it's going to be mandated, and we're going to be selling the cars. Well, we've had another election. Four years have gone by. Private places have all of these EV stations. No one's using them. When you look at Big Bunny, they put one in recently, most recently. No one uses them. You go to Stirbridge, you look at the ones up in Shaw's parking lot, and no one's using them. What is it going to cost us, along to manage the grant, hire people to manage the grant, then when we figure out, when this doesn't work, no one's using them, what is going to be the cost to return that piece of property back to what it was? In some cases, I'm reading fifty thousand dollars. Now, we have states like North Carolina now putting a bill in legislation to ban these. In Florida, they're doing the very same thing. Alberta, doing the same thing. There is an entire trend going against EV stations. People of Southbridge, there's a very small population of people who have EVs in town. There is already enough EV stations to service those. I heard in a previous meeting, there were in the dozens, one, two, three, tops, people, registered vehicles with EV stations. We have EV stations at the hospital. There's at least four of them there. And the people who, we had a nurse plugging into our town hall, freeloading their charge. If I went to the DPW, filled up my gas tank, I'd be arrested, but we are allowing people to freeload on the town hall. I made a phone call to a counselor, saw a pickup truck at the town hall plugging in. If we can't manage what we have now, and people are using it for free on our tax dollars, why in the world would we put out more of them when they're not needed? Will only create more expenses when we try to put them back to property. And no one, raise your hand if you think they're pretty, they're an eyesore. Why are we doing this? Because it's an ideology? It's one we don't need. It's not an expense. And I don't know, when's the last time you drove down the street and said, oh, there's a dozen EVs, we need EV stations? Where did this idea come from? Please, let's not do this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Dell?
Thank you, Chair. Through you, I want to thank you, both of you, for the hard work you do. Grant, life's changing, a lot of cars coming out, electric. When we installed those two, I agree with you, was for free, but was grant. We was trying them, only one with the town hall on the car, and then we got another one. Now we have a lot of them. Good idea to put them with charge money. So I support V-charge everywhere in town. We don't want to look like nineteen hundred and everybody else ahead of us. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Rivas?
Just a question, since I wasn't at that meeting and I didn't get a chance to watch it. Does this, voting in the affirmative, does this mean we're getting a whole fleet of EV chargers? Or I just want to clarify what, what this will mean.
Yeah, if I may.
Peggy?
Thank you. What Amanda suggested, this is not a national grid grant, just to clarify, it's the Clean Energy Center of the Commonwealth. There are two options. We can either do a feasibility study, or we can just go for reconstruction. They're aiming for communities with environmental justice statistics. We are a good candidate to be able to get this. And so, we should just go for the gusto and apply for the construction, and then they'll help us. What Amanda was just asking was, would it be helpful for you all to know that the part of it is that they are, they will study where the best locations are for on-road charging. They know that it's, it's not easy to sink into the...
They know that it's not easy to sink into the National Grid utility and that you'll need to be able to find something easy, that's part of the reason we've struggled to date. We have not been successful getting the fast chargers, we got none of our applications through unfortunately because we had a hard time with power issues and feasibility and so this grant will help us to be able to find those, those few, I think it's gonna be three on-street parking spots and we would be one of, I think, 13 towns that would be awarded if awarded. It's a good opportunity, in my opinion. And so right now, where it stands, we have two paid chargers at the RMV, we'll be getting two paid chargers at the town hall and that's the extent of the success we've had with the EV chargers to date. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counsel Shinia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand it's no cost to the town if they will get the grant and maintenance is going to be done by the company that installs the EV charging station and are we going to collect a fee? It's not a free charging, it's gonna pay for that, correct? Somebody's gonna pay for that?
If I may, through you, I will get the exact specifics and email you off those details later, but the way that these have been working is you're obligated to maintain them for three years, maintenance warranty, at least three years and then build in, yes, you build in your revenue to be able to then maintain thereafter.
If you could get that for me, please. Don't hurry, will you get it?
Ask again, I'm sorry? What did he ask?
She didn't hear you.
You can send that information.
Yes, happily, I will send it off to the council tomorrow.
Any further discussion? If not all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, one opposed, eight in favor. Moving on to 25, vote to approve a budget amendment of 1,26280 from CDBG FY21 6F Water to 6C Parks and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Shinia.
This was voted four oh to move forward.
Four oh, at subcommittee, favorable? Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 26, vote to accept a proposal from BSC Group for $74,250 to complete an urban renewal plan, major amendment funded by the Common Community Planning Grant contingent on the redevelopment authority's approval and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Dow.
Discussion?
This was voted four oh.
Unanimous in subcommittee, favorable? Counsel Mike Eddy, discussion?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So this is yet one more study in the downtown area that we can put on the shelf with all the other studies that we've done of the downtown area, but when I go downtown, I don't see the downtown area, any improvements going on, I still see broken windows and empty buildings and National Grid tearing up the road and not repaving it, so I just think I've had enough of the studies, I'd rather see more action being done downtown and less studying, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? Peg?
Yes, if I may. The town did an urban, completed an urban renewal plan back in the 2000s, within that called for the transportation improvement or the tip project of the downtown hook La Rochelle Way that's about to be underway over the next two years. It also called for a riverfront park, a lot of revitalization around the downtown. Some of that stuff needs to be revisited, it's a 20-year shelf life and we're a little further than halfway through. You had the Urban Agenda Grant back in 2020, that was to be able to look at what your urban renewal plan does, helps to train your redevelopment authority on what their powers are, that was a really good first step towards what will now happen. At that time, they looked at if they were to do an amendment, what would be included in that amendment and then that's where we are now, is now actually going for the amendment that was a potential. One of the key pieces of that urban renewal plan major amendment would be to include the fire station with the fire station soon being freed up and then that would give the town some discretion in being able to find a favorable opportunity. You could have a little more discretion in who gets their hands on that property, which could be very exciting for the town. Also involved would be other buildings that were excluded in the first place like Delicia's building, right, that was recently acquired by the Clemenses, but had the, Clemenses not purchased that, if we had it in the amendment and would have been a way to kind of push, you know, what's happening with these properties that are being left, we'll be looking at other key buildings like that, we'll be expanding a little bit out towards Hamilton Street and that obviously dovetails very well with our recent award, so it, although it's not happening now and although we wish it would happen faster, the town is doing everything in its power towards really trying to revitalize and this is just one of those tools.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, eight in favor, one opposed. Moving on to agenda number 27, vote to accept the rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity raise grant for $7.9 million to reconstruct Hamilton Street and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Dow. Discussion?
This was moved forward with a great big four zero and a lot of thanks to PEG.
Unanimous in subcommittee? Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. All set.
Counsel Montague.
Thank you very much. I know we spent some time already thanking you for this when it wasn't officially on the agenda, but we gotta thank you and I can't thank you enough for all these last agenda items, I feel like you're, might be a computer under there and not really human. So thank you for all of your hard work, you're fantastic, PEG, thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Mike Eddy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Thank you, Peg Dean, for doing your job that we were hired, that you were hired to do.
Objection.
I would like to point out though in the memorandum that Town Manager Michael McCall, he's no longer the Town Manager in your memorandum, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 28, review and discuss entering into a community development block grant, CDBG funded deferred payment loan agreement with the private property owner and take any action.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Dow.
This was moved four zero. Four oh in favor in subcommittee, Counsel Mike Eddy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, shouldn't we wait on this until after the executive session?
Sue, who is the CDBG coordinator, had wanted to just make a brief public input as to what this grant is, what it's covering and then the vote can be as stated in executive session, but she wanted the public to be aware of what this grant and this opportunity does and what the scope of this contract would be for transparency reasons, she felt very strongly that the council and the town should know publicly what this is covering.
All right, thank you.
Sue?
All right, hi, I'm Sue Starkey, I am from Southbridge and I am your CDBG coordinator. I sent you a redacted copy of a contract that we want to enter into to do housing rehab with funds from the CDBG program that come from the federal government to the state, to the town. These funds are intended to help low and moderate income individuals remain in their homes and provide decent, affordable, safe housing. It's not a home improvement program. Eligible activities include lead paint removal, septic system repairs or replacement, elimination of code violations, removal of materials or architectural barriers, upgrading electrical or plumbing systems and weatherization. Our office processes all the applications to be sure they meet all eligibility requirements, including verifying that the applicants meet the requirements for being low or moderate income. We do things like look at their tax returns, their mortgage documents, bank account records, we ask about employment and look for six to eight weeks of employment paychecks, non-employment income documentation, social security, child support, transitional assistance and pensions are things that we ask about. Once eligibility is verified, an inspection is conducted to determine the scope and specific work to be completed. We maintain a list of qualified contractors and the state maintains a list of D-letters who can do lead abatement work and we go to them for bids, we select the lowest bids and you can see all that information in the contract that I gave to you in redacted form. Everything that's going to be in the contract except the name of the applicant and the address and that's to protect privacy and that's in keeping with the expectations of the federal government, the state and those who gave us the funding. That's why I don't think we need to go into executive session. You can look at the contract and see all of the terms. So right now, your decision is whether or not you want to talk about the contract in public or if you need to go into executive session to find out names. I think with the amount of work that we've done to verify the qualifications, we can wrap up this meeting right now by looking at this contract, but it's up to you to decide.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was the one counsel that insisted that we would go into, it was suggested to go into executive session. I was the counsel that insisted that as a steward of the money that I had a right as a counsel to know where it was going and to who. That's it, I didn't care about how much money the person made and those kind of things. And I said that I would not support it if I didn't know that, so Counsel Kelly made the suggestion and agreed that as the stewards of the money, we should know where it's, who's going to and where it's being sent and he made the suggestion to bring it into executive session and that's why it was being said here. Contrary to what she says regarding the privacy, I think as a counselor, we have the right to know where the money's going and who's getting that money, whether it's done here in open session or in private in executive session, I don't care which way. But I'm the one that pushed for that and I think it's important that we as counselors know this. Thank you.
Counsel Mike Eddy?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so just, I'll just ask a couple of questions then without knowing their name even, I'm looking at the paperwork that you've provided here and, and listening to the, I'm sorry, if you want to go into executive session, then I'll just wait, but I thought you wanted to talk publicly first and then go into executive session, it's up to you.
Go. Just tell Amanda.
I think the purpose of this was if you had questions about how the funding is used, what scope of project this is used for, that's fine for open session. When it comes to the individual and the location, we can go in executive session, that's why it's posted this way.
Okay.
So if you have questions specific to what type of work it is, who manages the work, I think it's appropriate.
So, just looking at what you've provided, it seems to me that the person who's getting this loan can pick whoever they want, so even though you did provide estimates from contractors, does that mean that they can pick someone else if they want or do they have to pick the contractors that you've provided?
They have to pick, they get the lowest bid contractor unless they want to pay the extra money to get somebody who bid higher.
And I watched the meeting and was it said that they, is it rental property?
This application doesn't say whether or not it's a rental property, but it is, it has to be a private property owner. Some of them can include rental properties, if it does include a rental property, then they have, we have to verify the income for all the people who live in the building.
So, but wouldn't they be, wouldn't that be income for the person who is getting this, this loan? That would count as their income, correct? If they were renting out part of the house to someone else?
Yes.
And Sue wasn't part of the, remind them that you came in after Katie did all the local parter?
The person who gets tons of credit for doing all this work is Katie Yoder, who was here before me verifying all of these applicants, collecting all this information, making sure that all of the properties were qualified to do the work. When you ask how hard it is to manage grants, oh my goodness, it's a lot of hard work to capture all this data, so she gets a ton of credit, but I'm just letting you know now that we did verify that the person meets the eligibility requirements, all of the work that needs to be done was actually over and above the amount that the state wanted to give us. We asked for additional funds, a single case waiver so that we could do more of the work that needed to be done, that was given to us. I actually went back and asked for more money again, so maybe the state will be able to give us additional monies to complete the work that needs to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion by any councils? Counsel Montague?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say I've seen Sue out there in the community doing, working on things not only like this but stuff for other businesses in town and thank you so much for all of your hard work and if you are an employee of PEG, well, I must just say thank you, PEG, for doing the job that you were hired to do and doing it exceptionally well, thank you very much.
Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. Just a question, is, this is kind of like similar to the way we're helping the businesses in town, they gotta pay back the money?
So this is a forgivable loan, if you look at the contract, if you have it in front of you, the first page is, you know, standard contract stuff, the scope of work and then starting on page two, it talks about recapturing it. Every year for 15 years, 1/15th of the loan amount that's due decreases and if you live in the home for 15 years or it could be a family member who stays in the property, you don't have to pay anything back after 15 years. There's also item number 17 on the loan deferral plan, it says if the property owner retains ownership and reaches the age of 80 years, the loan is forgiven in full. Some people are lucky enough to get old enough to not have to worry about repaying the loan before the 15 years are up. So for the most part, we don't get the money back because it's forgiven over time. The properties for commercial rehabilitation project, there's some that are forgiven over a shorter period of time, but there are projects that require the business owner or property owner to pay 25% of the cost. So it's two different things and tonight, if we stick with the housing project, I'll give you all the answers and if you want me to come back and talk about commercial, we could do that.
I'm not gonna give you a hard time anymore. Thank you.
Counsel Reavis?
You actually answered part of my question and I just want to say that these, this type of usage for the CBD money was some of the conversations that we learned in our workshop at the Mass Municipal Association, so I'm pleased to see some of this work happening in the community. I think that these funds are really designed to help, you know, not only businesses but certainly residential, you know, residents and lead is a huge factor and I appreciate that this is some of the work that is going to be done to really keep people in their homes and that it's gonna be done in a way where if they remain there, they won't have to pay this back, so I, I really appreciate the work and I also appreciate how hard you work on grants because I have managed grants before, so, I get it.
Counsel Montague?
Thank you. If the previous speaker to my right who requested the executive session would second a motion to approve it now or to hear it now, I would like to make the motion to take care of this now.
Motion on the floor, seconded by Shinia.
Parliamentary inquiry?
Is a motion seconded on the floor. Any discussion on the made motion? You can discuss this under the motion. You understand what I'm saying?
Parliamentary inquiry as far as the executive session. Once you go into executive session, minutes will be taken. Once the...
Are you talking to this motion? We need to talk to the motion that's on the floor to accept this.
All right, I'm just...
He don't hear that.
He didn't hear it.
As far as sharing personal information in the executive session, after the...
You understand that if we vote this, there is no executive session?
Okay.
That, that's what we're saying. That's why you want to speak to the main motion in front of us. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to Council's Forum.
Wait a minute. Do we have a main motion?
Do we have to?
Yeah, motion.
What Council's Forum?
Council's Forum, yeah.
We haven't approved the thing.
We just, we just made the motion.
We just made the motion.
Yeah, we all said, it's done.
You're going to sign the contract?
Counsel Kelly. Counsel Kelly, Council's Forum, you got the floor.
No, no, hold on. We didn't vote for it. We just made the motion not to go on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, that was a motion to accept this, and we voted to accept it. That means we don't go in. Under executive session, it's number 31. Are you following me?
No, they're just reminding you there's another item.
I understand that.
I know you do.
Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So I just want to say that I was happy to see people come and talk to our, the council today. They were clearly on one side of the issue, but nevertheless, I appreciate the fact that they came, they came out, spent their time to address an issue that they apparently felt very strong about. That said, I also want to commend the young man that came out today, Mr. Parker Weaver, I believe his name was. I think he, I think he was taking a, he was taking a leap, and I think he had, had important things to say, and I was glad to hear from him. I think what he said concerning poverty and homelessness, as well as a couple of other folks said, was also struck home with me. I am a, I am a, I am a defense attorney. I, a lot of my clients are drug addicted, homeless. It is quite a struggle for them to live life, and most of them don't want to be drug, drug addicted people, but they are. Drug addiction is, is a disease that really is a very serious disease. It's not something that people just can choose not to, not to succumb to. Once you become addicted to something like heroin, or really today, it's all fentanyl, the disease takes over, and everything you do is, is in service to the disease. I work with the, with the Worcester Recovery Court, or the Drug Court, as some people call it. The Worcester Recovery Court was established in 2016. One of my clients was the first, one of the first people enrolled in it. It's a, it's a court designed to break the cycle of drug addiction and criminal behavior. It has quite a bit of success over the last almost 10 years, and one of the things that it helps do, oftentimes we have people who just are living on the street, doing drugs every day. As a result of their drug, drug addiction, they may commit some petty crimes, and they wind up in the court system. The court's designed to, to, to break that cycle, and with the services the court can provide, we're able to, in many, many cases, turn their lives around with education, with housing assistance, with a variety, with a variety of job training, and even job placement, working closely with the Worcester County Sheriff's Department. My point is that the services here, this population requires substantial services, and it would certainly be wonderful if the town could, 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 could provide, provide such services. The problem is, really, this has to be a joint, local, state, and federal effort, and I would even say in partnership with the private sector. This is a problem that affects everybody, you know, regardless of where you live, regardless of what your income status is, you're bound to find some people who are seriously addicted to substances, some people who are bordering on homelessness, some people who are homeless. And, so, I mean, it did strike home with me today, and I just wanted to acknowledge those folks who came and spoke about, about that issue. And certainly, I would, you know, look for opportunities to, you know, find out what your solutions are. I would ask, you know, what ideas do you have to help this problem? Some people, I mean, there are a small minority of these folks who do not want to, who do not want to live, who want to stay homeless. I think it's a very small minority, but, but people, a lot of, a lot of these people just really need, need a helping hand, and as a community, I think it's incumbent upon all of us to try to find ways that we can help them. Thank you.
Counsel Rivas.
Thank you, through you. I wanted to say that I appreciate the young person who was here earlier, helping or really sharing his own story with the community. That takes a lot of courage to be vulnerable about a situation that many of our community members have experienced, and, and I know that we have talked about with the Town Manager about a homelessness task force, and I think some of these different components that overlap and inter, interlap with the homelessness issue and also with substance abuse. It is important for us to try to bring in more people from the community to participate and talk about their own experiences, as well as the South County Housing First Task Force. I know I've talked to Leah Bradley, I know that she's reached out to the Town Manager as well, and so those are things that the town can, again, partner, and I do agree with Counselor Kelly, that we do have to involve the state and regionally, and working with other communities together to try to resolve some issues that are not only happening in our community, but across the state, and making sure that we're getting resources where we need them in our community, and I think those are the, you know, this is being talked about in all communities in our state, and so I think bringing in those resources and some of those ideas, and especially people that have lived experience, I think that is really important. Thank you.
Counsel Ortiz.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Counsel Shenyu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only thing I, I want to say is I appreciate the people coming forward tonight on the school issue. Most importantly, I ask the Chair to maybe send to the Education and Human Resources Subcommittee to have a discussion on whether this council wants to take litigation against the school and the state to take our town back.
We'll take you under advisement. Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I want to say thank you for the school committee, for the hard work and the do, and all these people, and the teacher came today, and I want to say if really Dr. Valar Benwell to help the school committee be able to take overs in the future, our, our vote shouldn't affect their relationship together to continue working for the dream or for the time being to be able to handle the school, to the, to the school committee. I want to say thank you for the United Lands, for the donation. They're very generous every year, all the time, they're, they're hard for the town of Southbridge to always help and donate money. And I want to say, Peg Dean, thank you. I know you're doing your job. A lot of people in the past, they have the same job you do, and I live in this town 27 years, I never see this much money you're bringing into the town. I really appreciate you. One more thing, that's for the Chair, direct. I didn't like the last vote. I was kind of confused. I was accepting what the Counsel of Shenyu want, to go in the private session, because we don't want to say names or location or money out in the public. I feel like it wasn't right the way we ended. None of us understand it at the end. Thank you.
Counsel Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to say that I'm very pleased with the turnout tonight. It should be like that, every meeting, where we have concerned citizens that are coming out, telling us what they believe, what they feel. And I also want to say that, that this, that item brought out a lot of people out of the woodwork in terms of being downtown, being in the stores, getting phone calls, emails, and that's democracy at its best, is when people are participating in it. And I know that my wife had said, is it bothering you that you're getting all these calls? And I was like, no, this is what it's all about. This is what I ran for. So I definitely appreciate it. I'm definitely pleased to see the turnout that we had, and I hope that it continues. You know, don't just let it stop at one item and then be done with it. There's a lot of important issues that are coming before this council on a regular basis, and these kinds of things need to be discussed. And we make the decisions the best we can based upon the information we have, and sometimes we're kind of guessing a little bit, I think, if we're honest, about what the townspeople feel, because sometimes they don't say too much. So, thank you for the turnout. I definitely appreciate it, and have a good evening.
Counsel Mark Hettie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as the homeless issue that was discussed tonight, in the past, there's been a lot of entrepreneurs that wanted to bring more housing to Southbridge, but for some reason, Town Council's not interested in that, because housing doesn't bring the revenue that they would like to see in this town. Even our planning board can't figure out a simple frickin' bylaw on how to add homes or additions to people's houses on their land. They can't figure this out, and they're going back and forth, and what do they do about it? So, the homeless is an issue, but if we're, if we're just going to keep pushing back and never allowing housing to take place in this town, more affordable housing, that's never going to get solved. I don't think dormitories is the answer. I think tiny houses is something that someone came, that has been brought up before. I think it's a great idea, the tiny houses that people can, can stay in, or even allowing a mobile home park in town. They have one in Sturbridge. It's an affordable way to live, and it's something that we should allow in Southbridge. I also wanted to bring up the fact that, you know, I drive, I go downtown a lot, and I like to go into Central, it's, Central Street is a total mess. National grid is torn up and put trenches on both sides of the street, and yet they're not even going to be forced to pave the whole street. I think that's in our bylaw, in our rules, if they put a trench on one side of the street, they got to pave that side. Well, they've put trenches on both sides of the street, so I think it's time we force them to pave the entire Central Street, not just where their trench is. And I'd like to see more of the downtown fixed up. It's, it's really kind of looking kind of sad with broken windows and boarded up stores, and, and the barber shop keeps putting couches and TVs out there. You know that's not theirs. It probably is some resident that's dropping off their garbage. I'd like to see the downtown cleaned up. It just seems like a mess to me, and all these studies that we do don't seem to be doing any, any good at all, in my own opinion, but that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Town Manager.
Just in regards to Central Street, as you're aware, the TIP project is going to be starting construction this spring. Part of that construction, the reason Central Street hasn't been done, is because they're doing the water line from Main Street all the way down, so they're not going to pave it then, rip it back up. So that's, that's the construction that's going to be done this spring and summer.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further, Vice Chairman, Counsel Montigny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's not much to say tonight, except I really appreciate everybody that came out tonight, and especially the Southbridge citizens. There weren't many, I think I could count the amount of Southbridge citizens on one hand, and those are the people that we work for. And furthermore, out of the Southbridge Res, after five years, has been opened again, and I can't thank the Larishell family and the friends of the Res enough for keeping that place afloat, and I believe it is open again this weekend, I was told, from 1:00 to 4:00 on Saturday and Sunday. I know there's a little warm weather this weekend, but they insist the ice will still be there for at least another week. I don't even think you have to pay for skates. Everybody's just so happy that it's, it's out there, so if you want to bring your families, please check it out. It's very nostalgic, and it makes Southbridge feel like the way it was once long ago. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to 30. Discuss, discussion of the next meeting dates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have three meetings next Monday, February 3rd. The first is a joint Town Council/School Committee meeting at 6:00 PM in the chambers. The next is a public hearing, Dangerous Nuisance Dog Hearing, at 6:30 PM in the chambers, and finally, the Town Council meeting at 7:00 PM in the chambers.
Thank you very much. Moving on to 31. Vote to enter to the executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 38, 21, under the following section. Three, to discuss a strategy in respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may become detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating positions of the public body and the Chair, so declares...
So moved.
Second. Is the motion a second? Discussion, roll call.
Counselor Daniel.
No.
Counselor Dow.
Wait a minute.
We, we need this executive session for legal matter, yes.
Are we still, oh, there's another...
This is a contract.
There's another issue.
This is, no, not a contract, litigation, yeah.
I withdraw my no and say yes.
Okay. We'll start over. Thank you. Counselor Daniel, yes. Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Mark Hettie.
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz.
Yes.
Counselor Rivas.
Yes.
Counselor Lozo.
Yes.
Counselor Montigny.
Yes.
And Counselor Shenyu.
Yes.
Thank you.
We will come out to executive session for adjournment only. Thank you.